Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our town council meeting of February 6th. And Rebecca, if I can ask you, please have a roll call.
Councilmember Andrews.
President.
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Rivasio.
Here.
Vice Mayor First.
Here.
Mayor Condon.
Here. Thank you. And if you will all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before we start in on our meeting, I just wanted to briefly announce, if you didn't hear already, that sadly, our former Larkspur chief Craig Sinnet passed away, and so we'll be... Pardon?
Sure.
Sure. What did I say? I don't even want us to ask what I said.
You know, we'll forget.
Okay. Anyway, we will adjourn the meeting this evening in his honor. And in regard to our closed session from last council meeting, we did report out that there was nothing to report, and I will just repeat that again. There was nothing to report from our last closed session. And then, we will go on to open time. And this is time when you are welcome to comment on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. And you'll be given three minutes, and please come up to the podium. Supervisor Redoni, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Condon. It's a pleasure to be here. I just wanted to come in and welcome the new year with you. I hadn't had a chance to get here yet in the new year, so I want to wish you a happy new year. But I also wanted to tell you that my office hours in the spring have been announced. There's brochures in the back. I believe it's Friday, April 13th, so we're risking everyone coming out that day. Also, I just wanted to say that thanks to Age Friendly Corder Madera, and Carla and Pat, the county Marin, on January 23rd, announced the Year of the Older Adult in Marin. And it'll be a year-long program, both honoring and supporting our senior citizens, and we're looking forward to many events that'll be useful, not only to our seniors, but their families and intergenerational groups also. So, thank you, Carla, and thank you, Corder Madera Age Friendly, for coming up with the idea.
Thank you, Dennis, for your fantastic support. Thank you.
Carla?
Yes?
Can I just say, Supervisor Redoni, we are grateful to you for coming by our town now and then. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. My name's John Lambright, resident of Corder Madera. To the town council members and fellow citizens, I'll make this brief. And especially if there's something that has gone on beforehand regarding this matter stopped me in my tracks. I checked through the code because I don't want to waste the council's time, and I couldn't find anything, but here I go. Lately, Nextdoor.com has been alive with viewers presenting their views and opinions regarding drones. Some see it as something very innocent, while others see it as possible invasion of privacy. One viewer actually provided the law on Nextdoor as written by the FCC. The viewer noted that the federal government is apparently leaving the issue of possible privacy invasion up to the local municipalities in order to determine what possible measures need to be put into place to protect those affected. I've always meant to ask a local police officer about this, but I've never matched up the timing regarding the ordinances that are currently in place in Corder Madera. Personally, I do not have a problem with drones flying in public spaces. However, I do not think that the town should allow drones to fly and hover over private property. What's the town's position on this? Or does the town have a position on this?
Okay, we don't respond to you. We just...
Oh, you just hear and...
It's just for public comment, yes.
Feeding goes one direction. Okay.
No, no, no. It's just that we don't comment.
Okay. So, there I am.
Okay, thank you very much, and that's something that we...
Thank you.
...will look into.
Hi, councilmembers. Jean Greenbaum, Casa Buena Drive. I do a lot of walking in town, and I walk from one mall to the other, and the trash that is everywhere is so disgusting and should not be... I know that it's something that's trying to be addressed because Caltrans... I just don't know where Corder Madera starts and Caltrans ends, and whose responsibility is, especially under the overpass when you go over from one mall to the other, where people, I guess, are walking to the buses and stuff. It's just, I don't know if that's Caltrans. I don't know who it is, but there should be some sort of campaign, some public awareness to stop littering. I know in the '70s, there was a big "No Littering in New York" campaign that I remember, even back, you know, from my childhood, when I was very, very young. But some sort of awareness has to be raised. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Yes, I saw somebody had even sent an email about a whole pile of trash on a public street. And Todd, can we, as well as the drones, can we look into that about kind of revving up the process of the trash that's on the streets?
Yes.
And it might be Caltrans' purview. Okay, anybody else? No? Okay, seeing none, we will continue on. And this portion is really one of the high points. These are going to be presentations, and the first one, there will be three, and they're for the Holiday Home Decorating Contest. And I hope that you all were able to drive around the community and see some of the wonderful and creative things that were done. Okay? And this doesn't have names on it, so only the addresses. So, I don't know whose house it belongs to. But for the Most Twinkling Lights of 2017, Ape Madera Boulevard. Oh! Here you are. This is beautiful. And may I ask what your name is?
Okay, my name is Kayla Washburn. I am resident of Ape Madera Boulevard, and I just am very happy that I can actually accept this award for, I think, the second year in a row.
Wow! Boom!
But, yeah...
Goes the dynamite.
Wow!
And also, I'm very happy because at least we won for the Most Twinkling Lights. This is like 100% unscripted, so I don't know. So, yeah, and also, I'm happy that the community couldn't see the 12-foot Santa Dragon in the front yard. So, yeah, I do not know how to end this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, these don't only bring joy to the family, to the Washburn family, but to the whole community that could share in this. Now, this is for the Most Original Decorations for 2017 at number 33, Eptide Passage. Do it again. And accepting the award?
Phyllis Rabinski. But I didn't do the work. See Me, who lives with me, did all the work. I'm allowed to do the lamppost. That's it. This is actually done for the community, the children, and the children of St. Pat's that keep coming by and saying, "When are you going to do it, Mrs. Rabinski? When are you going to do it?" So, I'm... This is, I'm not going to tell you how many times. But thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And See, thank you too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and the final one, and this one is on the other side of the freeway, for the Most Creative Decorations for 2017, 613 Meadow Suite Drive. Do we have somebody to accept the award?
In absent chair.
No?
No, you probably did.
613 Meadow Suite?
Rebecca, could you...
Okay.
Must be present to win.
There we go. That's always really so much fun. And the next is a presentation for one of the gentlemen that's really been a tremendous help to our town for many years. This award is the certificate of appreciation to Darrell Hepner for service to the town of Corder Madera. And he is our town's risk manager and insurance consultant for our self-insurance program. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations again.
Well, I can say thank you, Senator.
So, absolutely.
Yeah, time really flies when you're having fun, you know? It was a warm October day in 1977 that Harland Berry, the city manager at Larkspur, called me. They had just formed a group of six cities, and he says, "I think I got my program upside down. Can you and your friend come over and do some consulting?" And here we are, 40 years later, and I guess we're still doing a little consulting, but we're on our phasing out period time now. Thank you.
Darrell, many thanks on behalf of all of us for all your service.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to indicate that Darrell has been our insurance consultant and risk manager, actually, since July of 1976, and he's continued in that role up through June 30 of this year, excuse me, 2017. And since that time, he's been assisting Todd and the other staff in the transition to Bay Cities, which he will continue because we still are receiving claims in under our old insurance policy. And even though Darrell hasn't been an employee for the past 41 years, he's been an integral member of the staff, and all the department heads and other key employees in the departments have worked with him intimately, as well as some of the members of the council. For instance, on the 100-year celebration, he helped out Carla on several of the events that needed insurance during that event. So, we want to thank Darrell tremendously, and Todd would also like to say a few comments as well. Thank you.
Just real quick, I just want to echo that. And Darrell, thank you so much for everything you've done and the guidance over the years. I was four years old when you started, so it gives me perspective. And I just really appreciate your professionalism and the help with the transition to the new risk pool. So, thank you for everything. You're amazing.
And now, our town manager, Todd Guzmano, is going to begin with an informational update on the sales tax override.
It's going to be just as much fun, right?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a follow-up conversation from our last council meeting, and we'll continue moving forward at each council meeting until you say to stop. And I also want to point out to the council and members of the community, we have both in the back of the room and at the dais, we have the town newsletter that our Public Works Director, Peter Brown, and I drafted, that really summarizes and begins the conversation moving forward about our tax measure and really our discussion as we go forward. And it also, we have a copy of our PowerPoint presentation tonight, if you would like that after the meeting or during, and this will also be linked on our website. So, again, some brief background. We're talking about a sales tax measure that was passed. It was a half-cent sales tax measure in 2013. It was passed by 68% of the voters. Again, this was a 50% plus one measure, and so it was a really unanimous type of measure, strongly supported by our community in 2013. This was a six-year measure. It took effect in 2014, and it currently expires April 1st of 2020. All of our expenditures are reviewed annually by our Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. Many of those members are in this room tonight. The committee annually reports on the expenditures of the Measure B funds, and those are also available on our website. So, again, the ballot language from the November 5th, 2013 measure, it was a... The purpose of it was to maintain essential services, including but not limited to the six bullet points. Many are familiar with those. Something to point out, this is a general-purpose tax, and so the council at any point can spend the funding however they want, at your sole discretion. But again, the council has set these six priority areas. Those are the areas that we have stayed within and report out to the Oversight Committee. The Oversight Committee will be completing their report at the end of February, and that'll be available to the community as well. So, again, some quick sales tax measure background, and again, this is a follow-up from the last meeting. Did I go backwards? That would be bad. Thank you. So, some sales tax measure facts. Again, 5% to 10% of Measure B revenue are estimated to come from the town residents. So, only 5% to 10% of those revenues come from our town residents. It's approximately $250,000 annually, or $26 per resident per year. Conversely, 90% of the revenue comes from regional shoppers and residents. That's approximately $2.25 million. This is not a new tax, so net expenditures are unchanged from the 2014 rates, which are currently set at 8.75%. And this is something really why staff, in evaluating our current financial structure and really looking long-term to the safety, the fiscal solvency, and our capital improvements projects over the next 10 to 20 years, really brought us to this measure and conversation of how are we going to meet those needs moving forward. And one of the points that I really, as a manager, that I want to point out is that if this Measure B is not renewed, and the sales tax rate reverts back to 8.25%, there'll be little savings realized by the residents, as we pointed out above. However, the town's ability to improve our infrastructure will be severely compromised. So, we met with, in between the last council meeting and tonight, we met with the Citizens Oversight Committee on January 30th. And the next two slides are just some bullet points of that discussion. Again, we have Oversight Committee members here that can certainly speak for themselves. But some of the discussion that we had, you know, there were questions about the current 8.75% sales tax rate, and how much does the town receive? And the town currently receives 1.5% of that 8.75. The 1% is the normal sales tax, and that's about $6.5 million annually. And then the half a percent is our sales tax Measure B, and that's approximately $2.5 million annually. And again, California receives approximately $6.25, and then the county also receives about 1% in three separate measures. The half-cent Measure B is a direct allocation to the town, and this is something, again, we started off on. It's really important because it's the only locally-controlled revenue source that we have. We control 100% of it. 100% comes to us, and we control how we wish to spend it. And it's really important moving forward as we look at our needs in the future. And really, this presentation is going to be Peter really going over what those needs are. Something else we talked about, senior and youth programs are one of the expenditures outlined by the council. And we currently have, and we... It's been much discussed. We had a great article in the Marin IJ last month, and it's the Intergenerational Center renovation. It's currently underway. It's an approximate $160,000-plus project to renovate the community center so that we can start programming with senior and youth programs, and we're really excited about that. We also have an additional $30,000 funding within our current budget for those programs. And back to the second bullet point, state and federal resources continue to dwindle for us, and they're decreasing over time. And due to that, there's been over 146 newly-approved sales tax measures that have been approved in California cities since 2013. Lastly, from the Oversight Committee, in a summary of that conversation, we talked about disaster preparedness. It's one of our, you know, we're susceptible to flood, earthquake, and fires. And so, we had a discussion about what the town is doing with disaster preparedness. And so, currently, we have set aside approximately $1.7 million for unforeseen events, similar to what we've seen with our friends in Sonoma and Napa County, the devastation that they've seen in the fires, as a fund to support us in those worst-case scenarios. We also fund approximately $100,000 in this current budget, and it's available for brush removal and creating defensible space. There's been a lot of discussion over that and a need to really look at our ordinances, work with our friends in the county, and really develop safe, defensible space. And so, we have funding in our current budget for that to support our residents and our ordinance. We're also working with the Corder Madera Community Foundation and developing evacuation routes where it's deemed possible for emergency response plans for those disasters. Again, earthquakes, brush fire, flooding, we're looking at instituting signage and clearing the field to the brush and field that would take place in a fire to really make those routes safer. We've also, over this past year, we've hired a full-time fire marshal. And in the past, we've had a fire marshal, but as you know, the fire marshal had a number of duties. This is a full-time, his only responsibility is being a fire marshal, and he was hired last fall. He's been extremely successful, and his main job is fire prevention and enforcing our local ordinances, and so we're really excited about that. We also fund a Neighborhood Response Group, NRG Coordinator. They were hired last year. It's the Howards, and they've been outstanding and really helping us. And so, we have over 4,000 households in Corder Madera. We now have, thanks to their amazing work, we have 2,000 households in Corder Madera that are under the NRG umbrella. And that's really in a disaster, having the training and equipment and support to really handle and take care of themselves for days, sometimes weeks, as we know, the first responders may not be available. We budget right now in our budget $20,000 for that support, for the Howards. The Howards actually donate that money back to the Corder Madera Community Foundation for disaster preparedness. So, I just, I can't say enough about the Howards. We also fund $30,000 within our current budget for training, and you're going to see a lot of training over the next year for first aid, CPR, and bleed kit types of training. We also support our energy and neighborhood groups with equipment. We've helped donate two trailers to our NRG groups. We've also supported matching funds for two additional trailers and helped them outfit those trailers with support. We've also held a number of volunteer events to provide disaster kits to everyone in our community. And lastly, which is really important to the sales tax measure, we're evaluating the implementation of an early warning alert system. And so, we've talked about that a lot in the past, and this is something that would support that type of system. And so, I just wanted to point out, again, the last two slides were really the discussion within the Oversight Committee and a follow-up to our last meeting. But really, I want to turn it over to Peter, and I want to talk about moving forward, the need, you know, the infrastructure. And so, Peter briefly is going to cover those items for you.
Thank you, Mr. Guzmano. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Peter Brown from your town's Public Works Department. I wanted to just kind of remind everyone that I'm now in my third month here with the team. So, I'm finding that it is an incredibly complex and beautiful town. So, I think, you know, based on what you've heard from Todd, he's talked a lot about how we've used this Measure B sales tax measure to date. And the next 10 minutes or so, I would like to talk about my initial three-month assessment of, you know, how the funds could be used if the measure was to be renewed. So, the focus of this for me is really connecting the value of this locally-controlled sales tax revenue source with our capital improvement needs. So, what I've done as a lifelong advocate of urban planning, I've put up this land-use diagram. I know we've got some planners in the room, so they're probably licking their chops at basically a look at our town in terms of, this orange color is mostly what we would call our lower-density residential development. You can see we've got a lot of marshland. This is the 101 corridor here, the Caltrans right-of-way, and then, of course, a lot of our hillside neighborhoods. And really, this whole interface with San Francisco Bay is beautiful. It's beautiful to be this close to the bay. It's beautiful to have so many wetlands and so many natural resources nearby. But at the same time, when it comes to flood control, it poses what I would call very complex issues for the town in terms of flooding. So, many of you are familiar with the sea level rise assessment. There's four different categories, going from one feet up to about six or seven feet. And this is just the one-foot, 12-inch look at what happens to Corder Madera if we reach this level of increase in sea level. So, many of you may not be familiar, but since they started recording the gauge under the Golden Gate Bridge at Fort Baker in the 1860s, we've seen seven inches of rise to date. So, 12 inches is not an unforeseeable amount in the next number of decades. If we zoom in a little bit on the town, you can see, well, here's Town Park, and here's us. And this blue is basically between zero and two, or two to four feet of sea level rise impact. So, basically, the point of this slide is, we have a lot more flood control investment to do for a best-case scenario to protect what amounts to be a lot of folks and a lot of property. So, that's, you know, kind of one of my introductory remarks in terms of our need. And as a goal-oriented person and being new to the Public Works Department, I just wanted to kind of like put this in the context of what the goals are for my department in terms of how the capital improvement program relates to the sales tax measure. So, safety's number one. So, as a public safety professional, I think ensuring that the public, whether they're moving themselves through our transportation system, or whether they would like to see their risk of blackouts going down, floods and fires diminishing, those are really important in terms of the public safety realm. I also believe that we need to create a long-term revenue stream for town improvements, and this certainly is a candidate for that stream. The approach that I like to take is anticipating maintenance needs, prolong the useful life of assets, and then the big cost item is replacing assets as needed. Another goal, at least from my department, is to make the town of Corder Madera a model for how to fund and implement public works improvements. That's something that I'd like to bring to town. And then I've got some red lines here. So, we can also, in my opinion, increase the revenue that we need to meet the count's current and future infrastructure needs. We may also be able to do so at decreasing costs to local residents. And I think I did say decrease, so I have to answer yes to that question. Let's talk about why in one of my last slides. In terms of capital improvement program categories, I think these are kind of the big ones for us. Flood control, we've talked a little bit about that already. Senior and youth programs, the town manager went into a good discussion in terms of disaster preparedness. And then, streets and potholes, safer routes to school, this basically gets to our transportation system. And these are categories of funds that I believe these dollar amounts are good amounts to have in reserve for these ongoing expenditures. The next three slides really look at what I call projects underway. So, these first, the first category is storm, drainage, and flood. All of these projects, I'm showing the total cost, the name of the project, and where they are in terms of construction phase, some percent of final design, or even beginning conceptual design. And if you look at these, Mariner Cove, the Endeavor Cove Slide repairs, Harbor and Echo Storm Drainage Improvements, Golden Hind, Marina Village, we're already at $4.6 million that we've committed to, right? These projects are underway. They're not all in the construction phase, but we could very easily spend $4.6 million in the next two to three years to complete these projects. If we go on to transportation and pedestrian-oriented projects that are underway, again, numbers six through 12, you can see, you know, we're going out to bid for this improvement at Prince Royal and Paradise. We're in the design phase for many of these projects, and that just means that the construction phase, the most expensive phase, is coming down the line. So, again, in the two- to three-year timeframe, we're looking at another $16, excuse me, $6 million in the transportation system investments. And then finally, we're looking at facilities. This is obviously... This is obviously underway list, we have plenty of other facilities that we're yet to begin, but if we spend $250,000 in facilities, the total for what you've seen in the last three slides is $11 million. So, the need is great, and the revenue source, in my opinion, is important. So, a few more slides here, you know, I asked the question, is this sales tax revenue the best long-term town capital improvement program source? Well, we've just demonstrated, we have about $11 million in the hopper, that number can easily go up depending on how much money we spend between now and 2030, and I'll give you an example from our flood control system. Our most recent pump station was completed in 1999. These pump stations have about a 20-to-30-year, what we call useful life. That means that all the ones that have been built since the El Nino of 1982, some of you in the room remember what this county and this neighborhood was like at that El Nino, those investments are coming due. So, at some point in the near future, we're going to really have to replace and improve our flood control stations, all 10 of them. There's another five that are identified for new stations. As Todd mentioned, these last two, you've heard, I won't spend a lot of time on them, we do not have another ready source from the state or feds that we can rely on. And many other towns have chosen to go this route. So, the other topic that I wanted to bravely approach, and mostly because of Larkspur. Larkspur just recently passed a 3/4 cent sales tax. The prior rate for them was a half cent, as is ours currently, and I don't necessarily feel like I need to keep up with Larkspur, but I do feel like they did a good job in terms of demonstrating the need to their citizens. In our particular case, for the town of Corder Madara, this is actually very unique, that because of the regional nature of our shopping malls and our automobile dealerships, that local residents are not bearing the burden of this actual cost. So, we're basically getting others to foot our infrastructure bill. That's key and unique to Corder Madara. Another thing, those of you who are economists in the room will recognize that revenue erodes over time, and I just gave a few examples. Brick-and-mortar retail sales tax are falling, and they likely will continue to fall. We may be, in the next year or two, at the peak of personal automobile sales and ownership. Many, the future model is going to be ordering on an app, as many people are doing now, and it may be through an autonomous vehicle. So, I think relying on future personal automobile ownership and sales, which accounts for about 25% of the total revenue we bring in, probably not a wise decision for the town of Corder Madara to lean on that. And of course, inflation, if we set this renewal for five years or 10 years, or as Larkspur did, until the voters take it back, over time, the value of that money in 2018 is going to go down. And for all the other communities that I've worked in in California, they've all been saints, they haven't been, Corder Madara translates to cut wood, as I'm sure many of you know, but Santa Rosa, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, the towns that I've worked in prior to here, I don't know that they had this much complexity in four square miles. So, the need, I think, is great from a flood control standpoint and a transportation system that's in need of repair and modernization. I have a slide that I'll briefly show you in terms of numbers, the Marin County comparison, how do we do against other communities that are nearby us? And this, to me, speaks to how well we've done in terms of having non-residents fund our CIP. And just this last point here, if voters were to agree to a 3/4 cent hike, it would be my recommendation, and I believe I could get the town manager and the finance director on board as well, that the council could be wise in taking an action to do something like sunset the flood tax in 2018 and save money for local residents. So, that is something that local residents can't avoid doing. There's a $98 tax that's annual, and that's something that the council could decide to do if we were to renew the sales tax measure. The last slide I have before the chart here is just kind of answering this question, how can raising the 3/4 cent save residents money? Well, let's just walk through this. So, each residential unit in a thousand-square-foot of commercial property pay $98 per year, that's our flood tax rate currently. At a half cent, $2.5 million a year is raised, at 3/4 cent, we get to that $3.7 million if current sales tax revenue remains. I would predict that it would diminish slightly over time. And if locals only pay 10%, or $250,000, as Todd pointed out, that's $26 per resident at about 9,500 residents in Corder Madara. If that number goes up to $39 per year, right, that's a 50% increase, our residents would get a net increase, it would cost each resident about $13 per year. So, that, to me, would be what we would really be asking the community to do, on average, in terms of their sales tax expenditures. Now, here's where the council could get creative, if the voters were to approve a 3/4 renewal, council could take action to sunset the flood tax, and that's a $98 savings per resident, or about $42 per person. So, again, if you do the math, the savings is 42, the increase is 13, we're talking about $29 in the pocket of every resident in Corder Madara if we were to go this route, and of course, if the voters were to approve a 3/4 cent renewal. The final slide I have really is meant to show the power of the per capita revenue in Corder Madara. So, we are number one in Marin County. And we're not number one because every resident shops every single trip at the village or the town center, or buys a car every year here in town. We're number one because of our ability to leverage outside shoppers. So, we don't generate the most revenue, you know, Santa Fel takes that prize. You know, we're second to Santa Fel, Nevado's really close, a much bigger town, but in terms of our actual sales tax revenue, the number that means the most to me is the buying power that we get from regional shoppers. So, that concludes my presentation. I know Todd might have some concluding remarks in terms of the direction we may be seeking from you, but thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Peter.
And I think Peter summarizes it perfectly. I just, we really brought this discussion, and when we look at all of our revenues and our taxing, it really starts with this tax, because it allows us a lot of flexibility to really answer and start working on our big-picture issues, and there's a lot of them. And so, really, what we're asking council to consider, if you look at a timing standpoint, we recommend consideration of putting something on the June ballot. Again, we have two windows of opportunity. It's the June ballot, or it's the November of 19, or potentially, was it March of 2020? Because that has to be in a council election to have the 50% plus one vote. And we recommend that we do it now, because it's something we need to know we have, and we can start planning for it. And it would be helpful for staff to know, one, are you interested in that on the June ballot? Two, would you like further analysis at the next meeting? Because this would come back to you at the next meeting to consider that measure, to put it on the ballot, and would you like analysis at a half cent or a 3/4 cent tax? And what does that mean, a comparison of both of them? And so, that's really where we are in our recommendations and our analysis, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Todd?
I do have a couple of questions. Peter, thank you, by the way, it was an excellent presentation. It's about your slide about captioned, is sales tax revenue the best long-term town capital improvement program source? So, all the previous slides talked about the use of the sales tax revenue in the near term, and it was a good prioritization of all the important flood control projects and other things. But this is intended to be a rhetorical question, right? Like, you're saying, yes.
Well, Councilmember Bailey, to me, it is, and the main reason for that is our ability to leverage regional funds. That's the main point.
I just wanted to make sure I was following you on that. And then, the second one was, your first bullet point on that slide says that flood control and transportation infrastructure are expensive to maintain, $30 million to $50 million by 2030. Do you know if that includes the possible $20 million-plus expenditure that we've occasionally hinted at for a levy to help protect East Corder Madera from floods?
Yeah, that is actually the range. So, the reason why there's a $20 million range in there is because that is a big question mark. And so, you know, I think that if I were to hang my hat on the type of improvements that we could easily do by 2030 without having to deal in the regulatory permitting, what we'd have to do with the California Environmental Protection Agents, or, excuse me, the EPA, as well as BCDC, that levy and that whole protection system would be very difficult to permit, let alone to fund and build, but that kind of gets at that range.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you to both of you. Peter, you and I have spoken a couple of times about sea level rise. You know, I represent the town on the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members' Sea Level Rise Committee. I agree with you 100% that Corder Madara has a lot of infrastructure for such a small town. To borrow from Reno, which I don't usually do, I consider us the biggest little city in Marin. So, I'm wondering if you can touch on that just a little bit and plug the upcoming community meeting we're going to be having on our flood control infrastructure to kind of start the discussion about what we have and what we might want to pursue in the future to address sea level rise.
Vice Mayor First, do we have a date set for that meeting?
I don't believe we do.
It's hard to plug it.
Plug it anyway.
There will be a meeting at a future, undetermined date and time. It looks like March, but you're right. So, we're planning on having a community discussion, and actually, one of the things that we've talked about, Vice Mayor First, is perhaps me talking a little bit more in detail about some of the strategies that are what I would call state-of-the-practice in terms of how we deal with sea level rise, increased king tides. It doesn't just have to be sea level rise. If I say that at the Golden Gate, seven inches has been measured over 100-and-so-mond years, that doesn't sound like a lot. But one of the things you need to think about is what happens when we have, like, the super blood, red moon, and we have king tides at a time when, over the next few years, sea level rise has creeped up a number of inches. So, that's where we get our impacts. Todd's putting up, I believe it's a 1982 photo, in January after one of our El Nino events, looks like some trouble in town. So, this is something that our flood control system has abated this. We have had massive rains, many, many inches of rain between 1982 and today, but we haven't had this level of impacts because of the investment we've made to date. And one of the charges that Todd has given me and that I've taken from you all and that I've put upon myself is to really assess our needs, which is a big part of what I talked about, and I am quite honestly amazed by the need of this town in terms of infrastructure investment in the coming years. So, that's what I'll have to say in response to that.
Thank you. Can I just say one other thing? I wanted to orient people to this photo a little bit. Back then, the Tamalpais Drive interchange was four loops, the original cloverleaf. So, what you're seeing kind of in the center-left is Town Center, and then, that's Tamalpais Drive that kind of goes off at an angle off to the right, and in the foreground is Madera Gardens.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you both for that presentation. Let me ask, does anybody from our audience have any questions? Phyllis, yes?
Just a few comments of Phyllis Metcalf, 23 Park View Circle. Number one, you're using the new math. Your figures aren't correct at the end. If you're adding $13 on to make $39, you also have to add on the 98 that people pay. The difference is 85, not 98, that'll be saved, and half would be 4250. But anyway, when you look at the previous ballot measure and the emphasis on programs to be covered, the same emphasis exists today. Government exists to benefit the people, and part of that benefit is safety, and every one of these improvements may look like brick-and-mortar, but they are creating safety, whether it's flood control, fire prevention, disaster, and I think it's very important that this is emphasized as part of the campaign. So, please keep that in mind. People care about their safety, they care about their services. They take for granted what provides it, the physical structures, the roads, et cetera. So, please put the emphasis, so I want this to pass. I do have a question. If it is changed to 3/4, does that mean, I think, is it next year that the half cent expires? I forget the date.
April 1st, 2020.
Oh, okay. Does that mean that will be retired and the new 3/4 tax will be starting, I guess, January? If you vote on it in June? I know how the legislature has a time period of waiting, I don't know how they do it at the city level.
I think we have to write the legislation.
Yeah, it's flexible, it's how we draft it, so we have the option either way.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question? Okay, I want to thank you both. I think that, oh, do we have another? Oh, please.
I'm Eli Beckman, I live at 48 Stacktown Passage, and I just wanted to, it's not a question, it's a comment, rather, I just wanted to mention, I think, one thing that Todd and Peter brought up at the last meeting when this was discussed is also that the town has been really scrupulous and diligent about making sure, and this sort of builds on what Phyllis just said, the town has been really diligent about making sure that these funds are used for primarily the purposes that were presented to the people when we voted on this tax. And I think it's important that we continue to make sure that we are making sure that our funds that come from this tax are used for the purposes that the tax was sold on. And I think the town has been doing a fantastic job of that, and I think that that is another reason that we should definitely enthusiastically embrace renewing this, because I, for one, as a citizen, feel very confident that these are not funds that are going to get sort of rolled into the town's general fund and that we're going to sort of lose sight of where they came from or what they are intended for. So, I think that that's something that has been really successful about this tax. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Eli. Anybody else? Okay?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just, as a mathematician and a statistician, I couldn't help but to just explain, this is a complex slide, but to the prior speaker's point, I just wanted everyone to know about this nuance. So, the way that it works is $98 is assessed per residential unit or 1,000 square feet of commercial, so that's not per person. But I got to $98 per housing unit, down to $42 per person, by dividing by our average household size, which is 2.4. So, I would argue that this is not a mistake. I put a lot of thought into this, but I do like to have my math reviewed before I turn it in.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. I want to thank you both for a really, really good report on this, and from my personal perspective, I really see a critical need to extend this tax and optimally to make it permanent. I think that it's important that, as a strategy, that we can stress that it would cost our residents less if we reduced or eliminated that storm drainage tax. And so, I'm hoping that we can develop some good arguments for it, and it seems that people here today are in favor of it, and it's just that we have to get the word out. So, can we expect that you will continue that at our next meeting?
You can't expect that, and just to clarify, one thing that I would like to do, working with Todd and Daria from Town Management and Finance, is perhaps come back with a staff report, a written report, that really takes this presentation and develops an analysis between your two options. If you decide to renew it, do you want to renew it at the half? Do you want to renew it at the 3/4? We can bring you a written staff report that compares the two, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, from the town clerk, we were planning on bringing a first draft ordinance for your review on February 20th as well. So, if we have your direction to do both of those things, we will plan on doing so.
Please, because time really is of the essence for this. Thank you. Okay, we will continue on. We'll go now to our consent calendar, and the purpose of the consent calendar is to group the items together which are routine or have been discussed previously. Any member of the public, or staff, or the council can pull an item for further discussion. Diane?
Yes, I'd like to pull 4.1.2 regarding the Yes, I'd like to pull 4.1.2 regarding the ownership of streetlights.
Okay.
Carl, I'd like to abstain from 4.1.9, but otherwise I'll make a motion that we approve all of the other items as a whole.
Okay.
Excluding 4.1.2?
Yes.
Okay. Rebecca?
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rovazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay, and let's just quickly...
Do the minutes? Or do we approve them? He abstained. Okay, good.
Yeah, he abstained.
I have a very quick question.
Let's go over to, yeah, 4.1.2.
Thank you. I just have a quick question for our town manager, and since our Director of Public Works is here also, maybe he could pipe in. This is a housekeeping item to transfer ownership of streetlights over to Marin General Services Authority. That decision was made many years ago. It saves all the cities of Marin a lot of money in streetlight maintenance. I'm all for that. But I wanted to ask, how does that ownership transfer work with a future shift over to LEDs to save energy?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. So, and Peter, jump in here if you would like. As you know, we have $260,000 or $80,000 allotted in grant funding to go to the LED program. So we completely control that transition. So that'll be our responsibility. So this doesn't compromise us or slow us down at all. And that is something Kelly Crowe is overseeing, and we're hoping to move forward in the next year with that. And so one of the things we're looking at is a best practice with some of our fellow member agencies of, you know, as you know, there's different options of lighting. And so giving some samples and giving our community some time to look at those different samples and give us recommendations and feedback. So that'll be coming to us soon. And this doesn't slow us down.
Great, thank you. That was all.
Okay, so let's just go back with that to just vote on that one, and then...
Somebody's got to move it.
I'm happy to move it if there's no public comment.
Okay.
So I'll move 4.1.2.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rovazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. And if you could, please make sure for the record that on 4.1.1X that Sloan abstained on that one. Okeydoke. We don't have any sanitary district items right now, so we'll go on to the public hearings. And the first is a public hearing for consideration of an appeal, application requesting reversal of the Planning Commission's approval of design review application, PL 20170125 for 542 square foot addition at 22 Seminole Avenue.
Carlo, before you call the matter, I'd like to recuse myself from this one. I'm technically about 50 feet outside what I believe the radius is that would formally require me to recuse myself, but in order to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I will recuse myself from this item. Good luck and God bless.
So noted. Thank you, Sloan. Before we start, before Doug Bush begins, I'd like to remind and also inform the audience that this is a de novo hearing. It's already been heard by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission approved it. We had an appeal, and so the council would be looking at it, so to speak, with new eyes to see if perhaps the council perceives this in a different manner than the council, than the Planning Commission did. So it becomes a new hearing, like a clean slate. And I always am very grateful that my fellow council members share that, that everybody gets their fair day in court. So Doug Bush, would you like to give us a report on this, please?
Thank you. So I'm going to provide just a brief overview of the application, explain a little bit about all the events that led up to tonight, and then provide ample time for questions and for all parties to speak on this.
And just as a reminder, the town council did recently adopt, as part of its rules and procedures, an appeal process that is included, I believe it's, I don't have the specific section in front of me at the moment, but it's in your Town Council Rules and Procedures, and that's the appeal process to follow this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, just to comment on it. That is page, the top of page 11 of the Town Council Rules and Procedures.
All righty, so this was originally heard January 9th by the Planning Commission. Prior to that, this was a design review application that was submitted to the Planning Department on November 1st. So just to speak to the background of the application, the applicants came in in October, I believe, prior to submitting an application, and spoke with staff, with their architect as well, kind of wanted a lay of the land and to anticipate, you know, what process they were going to go through, how it all works, and to kind of discuss some preliminary designs. And that's something we always encourage from an application like this, to be able to have that input from an early time and to have those questions asked upfront. So the application was submitted on the 1st, and I believe the applicants had reached out to neighbors prior to that time and continued to throughout the process, and have continued to maintain correspondence with their neighbors and with the appellant's through, up until this, up until this date. In speaking with their, some of their neighbors about this, certain questions were raised, certain concerns from some neighbors in particular. In response to that, the applicants made several changes, which I'll go over here just briefly, and provided a revised floor plan. And that was what was considered and what was approved by the Planning Commission at the Planning Commission's January 9th hearing. The record is quite extensive. I'm happy to answer any questions on any particular items. But just for now, I'll provide a brief overview of where we are here in the neighborhood context and just some details about the proposal. So this is at 22 Seminole, kind of wedged here between the town center, Neil Cummins Elementary School. It's off of Tamalpais and Madera Boulevard here. The house was originally constructed in 1953. Here's some of the neighboring houses, just to give kind of a sense of the character of the neighborhood and the architecture in the immediate vicinity. So all these homes are within the block of the applicant's property. This is the photo of the appellant's property, which is kitty-corner to the applicant's property at 22 Seminole. So this is 27 Lakeside. Here is the front elevation, looking west of the subject property. This is a property that's slightly under the standard size of a lot, under today's standards for creating a lot in the R1 district, so it's under 7,500 square feet. I believe the current house is around 1,450 square feet, including a 470 square foot two-car garage. And the proposal is to add a 542 square foot second-story addition over this with very minimal changes to the lower floor, the intent being to maintain the existing living space and floor plan and materials of the lower floor while increasing living area in the upstairs. This was a site plan that was revised between the time that the application was approved by the Planning Commission, based on their direction and their requirement for the addition of a particular condition of approval. This was in response to that condition of approval to provide specific plantings on the, what is the northwest corner of the property. And I'm happy to answer specific questions on that after we get through this presentation here. This is just an outline, kind of highlighting the area of the addition on that westernmost wall, which is the top of the rendering shown here. That continues the wall from the lower floor. On the north, south, and east of the addition, it would be set back from each of those walls to provide some articulation and to balance the visual kind of massing of it. Also, you can see here that it creates a master suite and a bedroom. This is the floor plan, obviously, that was approved by the Planning Commission, and the floor plan has not changed since the prior approval. This shows some of the strategies that were used by the applicant to design an addition that was compatible with the site and with the neighborhood. Several things that you'll see here is that the master bathroom at the northwest corner there, top right, that uses clear-story windows, which means that they're higher than typical kind of height, head height or sightline height. That was done in response to specific feedback from the appellant's at 27 Lakeside about concerns about privacy and view into their rear yard from this new addition. And so that meant that the master bedroom was then moved to the street side. I have several elevations here. I won't go through all this, but I provided them as reference if there's specific questions. But some of the things that, I guess, of note here are that the windows really have been sensitively sited and designed with consideration to neighboring properties and with the goal of, you know, eliminating or reducing impacts, privacy impacts wherever possible. Even the location of the addition was done with sensitivity, acknowledging that there are view corridors from houses that are on the east side of the Seminole that sort of look out across the street over toward Mount Tam and the hills. And the location of this addition kind of over that northern portion of the structure provides that view corridor for neighbors across the street. And that was done purposefully for that reason. Here you're seeing, again, more clear-story windows on the sides of the houses to prevent significant views into neighboring properties. Ultimately, this was approved by the Planning Commission. The resolution that approved the project is included in the packet. I just wanted to call your attention to several additional items that were provided to you in advance of the hearing that were sent in and provided by both the applicant, the appellant's, and several neighbors and different members of the community in response to the notice. They were provided to you outside of the packet. There's several copies provided at the back of the room as well for review. And since the hearing, also just several other developments, there was kind of, at the prior hearing, I think it was, I kind of identified that existing trees in the rear yard had blocked some of the views from across the street. And though it wasn't a condition of approval or a blockage to the degree that affected the design review findings, the applicants reached out to their neighbors about that and are working on kind of, working with arborists to try to improve that situation there. In addition, they reached out to, the applicant's reached out to the appellant's, Ms. Morrison, in regards to the types of plantings between the yard to try to find something that would work both for both parties. Didn't receive feedback on that, but they have provided some proposed plantings on the site plan there. Ultimately, this is a, you know, this is a new hearing with a significant amount of history, but it's up to the town council to determine whether the design review findings can be met. Several options are provided at the end of the staff report here to deny the appeal, upholding the Planning Commission's action. And there is a resolution for approval that's included in Attachment 1. If you find that all the findings can be met, the other options, of course, are to modify the Planning Commission's action by changing the condition of approval. By approving the appeal, it would deny the application. And then the matter can also be remanded back to the Planning Commission for their determination, provided that direction is provided by the town council. And that concludes my presentation. I've also, you know, I have additional photos here, both taken from the appellant's property on a site visit that was prior to the Planning Commission, last Planning Commission hearing, as well as all the photos that were considered by the Planning Commission at their prior hearing. And of course, copies of the plans, and happy to answer any specific questions you have.
Okay, thanks, Doug. Any questions of staff? No? Any questions from the public? Okay, I will close it to the public and come back. And just to refresh my memory, the appellant's go first, is that right?
Right. So Item 4A on top of page 11, the presentation by the appellant is given 10 minutes. The presentation by then, the applicant is another 10 minutes. And after that, the council questions, has questions for the appellant, applicant, and her staff, and then we move to public comment.
Okay. Great. So if we can start with the appellant's?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is John Sharp. I am the attorney for the appellant, Inga Morrison, who is not present this evening, and I'd like to address that for a moment. You have correspondence in your agenda packet from me, requesting, among other things, on behalf of Ms. Morrison, that this hearing be continued until Ms. Morrison is back in the country. As staff noted, when the original appeal was filed, Ms. Morrison made staff aware that she would be away on a long-planned trip until late in February. I thought I heard from staff at some point that the council might take up the question of continuing the hearing first. I don't know whether you want to separate that out from the rest of our appeal, but I do want to address it. I want to address the question of continuance because of the appellant's inability to be here.
Okay, well, our process is, as you probably know, that this would be the time when it is heard. And correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but from what I understand, the residents, the owners of the Seminole property didn't want, did not want to push the project farther than they had to. And so they were within their rights as far as the town ordinances and policies go. And if you would like to address that?
And I think I can.
Do you want to address it?
I did want to point out, you know, you did receive correspondence from both the appellant and the applicant regarding this issue of postponement. And so we did have a discussion last week that this could be something that the town council takes up initially at the beginning stages of this hearing before we get into the arguments for and against. I think it makes sense. It's something that the town council has done before, so it's really at the discretion of the town council whether or not it wished to postpone the hearing to a different date or not based on the correspondence that you received and has been in your packet. You should, can point you to that if you'd like to look at that again.
Any feedback from my fellow councilmembers?
I would not be adverse to postponing it until March, first meeting in March, but I'll go with, I would not be adverse to postponing it until the first meeting in March, but my fellow councilpeople want to go ahead, I'm ready to participate and make a decision.
Yeah, I think...
Hello? Yeah. I think we should go ahead and do this this evening. They've been at this since October. I understand the appellant's issue with being out of the country, but it would actually push it all the way back to March, which is a whole month, which, when someone is trying to, you know, get on a decision, just seems unreasonable. So since, you know, we're already on the process, I'd say let's just go ahead and do it this evening.
Okay, and Diane, your feedback?
I would agree with Bob. In addition, you know, we've received a lot of correspondence, written emails. There's a lot in the packet, but we've also received things over the last couple of weeks. I think there's been plenty of opportunity for people on all sides of the issue to share their views. So I don't feel like we need to put this off in order to gain additional information about any individual's points of view. I think we are well familiar with how various people feel about this, and I would support going forward with it tonight. going forward with it tonight.
Okay. And I concur with both Diane and Bob on that. I think that, I know, speaking for myself, I had the opportunity to go to both properties, and I feel that I've, can judge fairly on this particular issue. So if you would like to continue?
Yes. I did not actually make my comments in support of the request for continuance. I was asking how you wanted to proceed on that issue. I understand, I think, where the council is with it, but I would like to make a couple of comments on the point anyway, for the record.
Sure.
Mr. Hurd, the attorney for the applicants, and the council pointed out that you do hear this matter de novo. For that reason, I think it is all the more important that the appellant, who resides at 27 Lakeside Drive, be here to address you and you hear directly from her. She will live with the impacts of this project all her life. So the fact that she is not being afforded the opportunity to stand here and speak directly about the impacts on her as she goes about her business in her home day in and day out, I believe prejudice is her and is a violation of due process. But I understand, I don't intend to argue with the council. I understand that you wish to proceed, so we will do that.
Thank you.
With me here this evening is Deana Morrison, who is the daughter of Inga Morrison, the appellant. You will hear from Deana Morrison in a few moments, but I would like to make a few comments and observations before that happens. And I understand we have 10 minutes. And I don't know how much of that I've used, but I don't need that full time anyway. You have correspondence from me detailing my client's concerns with this application. Excuse me. There are also photographs included with that correspondence. I think you've seen, they are in your agenda materials. I think you've seen a lot of photographs. I'd like to say they speak for themselves, but I'm going to say some words to you about the photographs and about findings in general. Although I do not agree with the outcome, if you will, of the draft resolution of denial that the staff included in your materials for this evening, that resolution does point up the findings that I think are at the center of the project and are at the center of our appeal and our objection to this project. So I'm going to refer to some pages in the staff report and to some specific findings that we believe are not supported by substantial evidence as is required by law. Finding three, that the project will not significantly and adversely affect views, sunlight, or privacy of nearby residents, and provides adequate buffering between residential and non-residential uses. I again refer you to the photographs that are, that were submitted with our letter. If you look at those photographs, you will see primary living areas at my client's property that are heavily impacted by the mass bulk height and general presentation of the second story that is proposed here. You'll also see that the outdoor living area, namely the pool and patio and outdoor dining area, are directly in the shade and within the scope of the mass and bulk of this proposed second story. I noted in the presentation by staff, it leapt out at me, and I wrote down some language that I'm going to quote here from staff, that the character of the neighborhood, well, I'm sorry, you were shown photographs by staff in conjunction with the demonstration of the character of the neighborhood in the immediate vicinity of the project. Nowhere in those photographs did you see second stories. And that is central to our appeal to you this evening. The character of this neighborhood is not that of a second story neighborhood. I can parse words as to what the radius is and how many second stories there are within a given radius. Staff can do that. Council for the applicants can do that. But the immediate vicinity of this project is not a second story neighborhood, and this second story is going to have a substantial impact on my client, as I said earlier, for the rest of her life. Finding four that is required to be made is that the structure, site plan, and landscaping are in scale and harmonious with existing and future development adjacent to the site and in the vicinity. The comments I just made about the character and the non-second story character of the vicinity really goes to finding four, and I ask that you consider that. And that would be the paragraph, if you look at the narrative following that proposed finding, that's where you see identification of, you could say several, you could say a few. You see some, but certainly not any overwhelming amount of second story projects within a radius of this project. And again, this second story has a severe impact on my client's property. Another concern related to the approval of a second story in a neighborhood like this is the domino effect that can be created. I've practiced in a lot of jurisdictions in this county, all of them. I was a planning commissioner myself. I was a council member. I've seen what happens when residents of neighborhoods are put in a position of competing to raise height of houses in order to preserve views, and it does not take a long time for a domino effect to occur. I ask that the council keep that in mind. I will wrap up by saying that your town code and your general plan protect quality of life values for your residents. On behalf of the applicant, we submit that the application, I'm sorry, on behalf of the appellant, we submit that the application as presented does not meet the standards that are intended in your general plan and your zoning code to protect those quality of life values. And with that, unless you have any questions for me, I will turn it over to Deana Morrison, who spent some of her life living in the property at 27 Lakeside Drive.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Deana Morrison. That photo of the flood brought back frightening moments because we actually spent the night in the community center on that flood night. So, oh, thank God, we have all the infrastructure to not have that anymore. I grew up in this house in 27 Lakeside Drive. I still, you know, spend tons of time there because it will be my future as well. And we've had that house for 35 years plus. We've lived in the neighborhood for 40 years. And anybody can walk through that neighborhood. You can drive through that neighborhood. I'm a real estate broker. I can tell you that if I was driving my neighbors through that neighborhood, I would say a second story might not happen here because you can see that all of these houses are single story houses. We like these neighborhoods. A person picks a neighborhood for a reason, and the reason in this neighborhood, for Madera Gardens, is you have views of Mount Tam from every house, front or back of their house. Everybody's got a view. To all of a sudden put up a second story house, a second story on a house is a detraction. And if you look at neighborhoods like Central Novato, where they also all started out as single story houses, now you look at, there's some two-story houses, there's some apartment complexes, their values are not going up nearly as high as the Corden-Madera values are going up. And that's because we have a plan and it stays the same, and it's appealing to everybody that lives there. That's why they live there. So I think that the character of our personal house is that we have a pool, we have lots of windows on the inside of that area, so we can enjoy our pool. When you look back at some of the photos that were shown earlier, there was a photo of the front of the house and of the second story-to-be house. And right now, all you can see is flags and string. Of course, that does not make you feel like there's a second story there. Nobody lives there right now because there's flags and a string. Not until there is brick and mortar do you then feel the pressure of what a second story really means to a building. And in our house, this means that walking from your bedroom to your bathroom, I don't know how many of you walk at night, going from your bedroom to your bathroom, are you going to put on clothes to go to use your bathroom? No, because you have a privacy. We will have, our privacy will be completely changed. So the privacy is one thing, the mass is another thing. I think that's really important to point out that there's also now going to be a huge, and I know it's only 542 square feet for some people, but for us living in the backyard, and we spend a lot of time in the backyard, that is a big story that's all of a sudden in our presence. And also, on another part, is that there's a lot of elderly people in our neighborhood and in all these neighborhoods. And they are not going to come out to these meetings to say their, speak their mind because who really wants to? I mean, when you become a certain age, you don't really want to come out and do all this all the time. And I think on behalf of them, they shouldn't lose their privacy issues either, just because this is now going to start a new precedence, and it will start a new precedence. And I think it's a slippery slope to be going down. That's my point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and now if we can hear from the applicants.
My name's Riley Hurd. I'm here on behalf of the Bosnanski family. They're the applicants for this project. This came to me recently, and I looked at it and I said, this is a really small addition, one of the smaller ones I've ever seen appealed. And I was trying to figure out what's going on here, and I think the answer is this concern about the domino effect. And the legal response to that, and perhaps a political one, is this does not create precedent, not legal and not otherwise. And there's a reason for that. You guys have one of the stricter design review findings for second stories of any jurisdiction. You have it located in your general plan. It's in the constitution of development. And so what that means is that site by site, case by case, you have to look at every single one. And approving one here, which is appropriate, does not make it somehow a matter of right to get a second story at another location where the findings cannot be made. If you can't make the findings, you're not getting a second story. So it's not a domino effect or a precedent, it's the same case-by-case basis that you do every single time. I've given you a handout that is a quarter mile radius that shows over 20 homes with second stories. We should also know that 150 yards away on the same street is a house with a second story. So it's true. There are some properties in this neighborhood where the findings can be made. This is one of them. The height limit in this neighborhood is 30 feet. You have to at least anticipate the opportunity of being able to go up if you have a 30-foot height limit. Otherwise, that would be meaningless. This one is proposed six feet below that limit. So I referenced the general plan, CD 2.4A. Talks about breaking the mass, architectural design, window size and placement. These applicants spent an inordinate amount of time, at their expense, both project design-wise and financial, responding to concerns that fit within CD 2.4A. This has included changing the location from one side to the other of the second story to protect views of Mount Tam, stepping it back, keeping it small, using a similar roof pitch and materials. The north, south, and west elevations all have clear story or no windows whatsoever. So they've sacrificed light, they've sacrificed their view of Mount Tam, they've sacrificed the layout of the second floor, all in response to concerns and, you know, it's a little disappointing to get appealed after doing all of those things. With clear story windows, you can't see out of them. There is one elevation with windows in which they plan to have a nursery for their child. Privacy is a two-way street. They're going to be using shades that rise from the bottom. It's just hard to hear the privacy concerns being expressed when the planting that was required by the planning commission and the window program just doesn't give support to those concerns. Views. The only view of Mount Tam that could possibly be impacted is from across the street on Seminole. And what they've done is masked the second story on the north side to leave those corridors open and also had to block their own view by taking away the windows on that side in response to neighbor concerns. So they protect the Tam views of others while losing their own. Thank you for reciting. This is a de novo hearing, but you do appoint your planning commission members to get in the weeds on these things and go through them with a fine-tooth comb, and they have found it fully compliant. Final two points. This meets all of the numerical objective development standards of your code, not one variance. That's rare, and it meets them by a lot. So the correspondence in the appeal talked a lot about findings and evidence and the Topanga case and all of these things we always talk about. I just, I want to commend staff as someone who reads draft approval resolutions nightly. This is one of the most thorough. We call it bridging the analytical gap between the evidence, the findings, and the decision. Reading through it, I found nothing to add. The decision is completely papered, totally supportable. I found it impressive. So this is not a case of lack of findings, that's for sure. So I'd like to invite up the project applicant to give you a little bit of his thoughts on the design.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Doug Mile, I'm the architect of the Bosnanskis, and I met the Bosnanskis, it seems like an awful long time ago, back in the spring, to first talk about this. And the first thing that I realized is that this client is going to be probably the best client I've ever had for a residential addition. I discussed the process with them, and they immediately took proactive steps to meet with the neighbors and to talk with the neighbors, even on much more preliminary designs than, you know, what we first talked with Doug Bush about. We had already, we'd been through a number of different design iterations on this project and looked at a lot of different things. The second story, when we first looked at it, was quite a bit larger. As you can see from the plans, the second bedroom is really a nursery size. It's not a very large bedroom. We had looked at previously, you know, much larger footprint for that, a couple hundred square feet larger that would make it a real bedroom and add a bathroom up there for that. We removed that in the interest of trying to keep this thing small. We looked at a lot of different roof configurations, ones that might mimic the gable roof that's on one end of it, but eventually decided that, hey, let's bring this thing down and make it as low-profile as possible and really set it in and set it back from the walls. So this feels like it's part of the original design and fits in with all of the architecture. We chose just nothing but hip trusses on them. They have a very low profile, even above the plate height. I'd like to address also the comments that came from Ms. Morrison, suggestions, we're calling them, for different ways of approaching this. And these are things that we had looked at and had decided for, I think, very obvious reasons that they won't work. This is in the flood zone, as you saw, you probably could have seen the house on one of those slides, and the FEMA regulations require that the floor level of any addition would need to be three and a half feet above the existing floor level of the house. So any horizontal addition is going to be three and a half feet or seven steps up from anything else. So it makes it extremely difficult to do any kind of backyard addition that would, you know, end up being about five or six feet above the actual backyard. The garage is a nonstarter because it won't fit in the size of the garage. The front yard, if you can imagine, it's the only thing that might be possible without a variance, but if you can imagine the floor level of an addition, if it was in the front yard, would be six feet above the sidewalk. And I just don't see how that could be designed in any way that would be compatible with a neighborhood, especially compared to, I think, what we've come up with, I think, is, you know, very simple, modest, elegant design that fits in, and I believe that after it's done, everybody will not really see that as anything different than, you know, what's there. We've done a lot to mitigate the privacy aspects of this, and it's been mentioned about... last, the approval from the planning commission was to put in the mature hedge screening. And I don't know, Doug, if you have that slide of the visibility profile of that, but what it shows is that by putting a hedge along the unguarded fence line on the north side, does an incredible job of screening for privacy. And it's just a very simple thing. I don't know if you, okay, the pull-up. Thank you very much. Shows that, you know, and so, you know, I do this all the time for different jurisdictions, and it's a very simple thing. You know, you just, the geometry's all there, and so this shows that at 14 feet, it will more than cover, you know, the five-foot tent, you know, top of anybody's head inside. We are, have looked at that and kind of come to that number wanting to make it private, but not to cast any more shade than we need to on the neighbors' yards. And addressing that shade issue that was brought up with those photographs, I think if you look at the photographs closely, it's pretty clear that it's only creating shade for about a half hour, not an hour that's shown. So about between eight and eight-thirty is what is evident from those photographs. And yes, that is true, there is some shade. It is at the winter solstice, and it only happens once a year, you know, so maybe for a couple of weeks during that period, that's it. Okay, anyway, I just wanted to, you know, just wrap it up and say that, you know, due to all the mitigation-
Thank you.
...that we've done, that it's not a significant impact.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any questions for the applicant? Okay, then we will open it to public comment, and if you would please line up so we can do this with some brevity, that would be appreciated.
My name's John Lambright. My wife and I live at 21 Seminole Avenue, directly across the street from 22 Seminole Avenue, and facing due west towards Mount Tamalpais and the western mountain horizon. We have lived at that address for 25 years. We are against the addition of a second story to 22 Seminole Avenue because it would obscure our view of Mount Tamalpais western horizon, which we have enjoyed for all these years. In deference to what Mr. Bush said, what the Bosnanskis' attorneys say, that corridor of view on the south side of the house is going to be obstructed by tree, tree growth. And I'll get to that later on, but I just want to note that I take exception to Mr. Bush's observation with regard to the corridor of view, and I believe it's Mr. Hurd, is that correct? Our view of the mountain horizon with its beautiful sunset certainly merits some worth in terms of value to us, both aesthetically as well as from a point of realty value. The town's general plan regarding view preservation is clear with regard to reaching a balance between growth development and maintaining our unique and idyllic views. We ask that the council give fair consideration to view preservation in this matter. We also oppose the second-story addition because of the way in which it will conflict with the style, charm, and appeal of our mid-century second, single-story community. We do not believe that this community was created so that the homes within it could be modified to have another story added to it. The homes are too close together to facilitate second-story additions without infringing on privacy and the panoramic view of the mountainside from neighboring properties. Coupled with second-story additions, overgrown trees have begun obscuring residential views of mountain vistas. Number 22 Seminole is allowed to add a second-story addition. It would serve as a clear example of this assertion. However, to their credit, the new owners at 22 Seminole have verbally indicated that they would be willing to cut back top two trees in their backyard that serve as a major source of the view blockage. By doing so, they indicated a willingness to open up our view of the Mount Tam horizon and provide us with a view as we had described it in a meeting before the planning commission. We are heartened by this offer. If they follow through with this tree modification, maintain a mutually desirable tree heights going forward, it would go far in ameliorating this very unpleasant situation. Philosophically, on the subject of the general appearance of single-story homes in our community, some would say that our community needs updating, as if the existing homes needed remodeling, like an old rundown bathroom or kitchen.
Thank you, I'm sorry, the time ran out.
Well, it was just the philosophical end of it. I got my, I got my meat and potatoes done here.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mine will be much shorter. My name is Gertrude Markren, I'm the wife of John Lambright, and I agree with whatever he said. Yeah, I've gone through it several times. So mine is pretty short. The owners of 22nd Seminole bought the house last summer, and the house has been unoccupied since the purchase. If a second story gets approved, and a second story, when a second story has been completed, my concern is that the owners will not occupy the house for an extended time, instead would flip and sell the house. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, and please, if you have some input, please get in line.
Hi, my name's Don Wilburg. I live with my wife, Loretta, at 13 Seminole. I wrote a lengthy letter to you, a lot of general ideas, but I want to speak to two different things, specific things. One, if you go around the town and look at all the neighborhoods, there's a lot of things that have been added, and second stories and improvements and all that, and I'd certainly like to have our neighborhood be able to, you know, do the same kinds of things that the rest of the town has been able to do. Improve, get better, get bigger. If we, if we stay the same, or we don't improve, we're going to die, we're going to go the other direction. The second issue is I object to the requirement that the planning commission added to the approval for the screen planting to be put on the applicant's property. And I come at this from a very personal experience that we've had. After we moved in many years afterwards, the town passed an ordinance that basically gave our neighbor the right to certain things with our planting, okay? What happened is, is that we objected to that, we went to the town, the town said, "Oh, no, we're not going to do this, we're not going to deal with this, the, you're going to have to go to court and deal with this." We were threatened with a lawsuit. We ended up settling because it costs, it only costs us $10,000 in legal fees as opposed to $50,000 if we would have gone to court to prove an unconstitutional ordinance was But I have a better solution. Don't, don't do that to these people. Don't require them, if you want screening, then here's what I would suggest that you do. Number one, put the plants on, well, actually, put the plants on the people that are being, that are requesting the screening, okay, because that does a couple of things. During the planning commission meeting last time, they said the town would be the, sort of the interpreter of the rules. They'd go around once a year to make sure that the plants were maintained. Okay, so if it's on the neighbor's property, then the town doesn't have to get involved. That's number one. Number two, the, there isn't any forced conversations between the neighbors. The neighbors don't have to talk. It's okay if they do, but the ordinance now, or this, this, this thing, will make them have to have conversations, which may be uncomfortable. Number three, there's no lawsuit potential. Okay, because now, if the, if the trees aren't maintained, it is the neighbor's problem. And number four, if you request something to happen, then you should be responsible for maintaining it, taking care of what it is that you have.
Thank you. And the next person, thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Von Walberg. I live at 38 Lakeside Drive, which is not far from 22 Seminole. And I'm here tonight because I drove by the story polls in December, and I got so excited about a beautiful new home in our neighborhood, and I hope tonight you deny the appeal and let the cows, sorry, we haven't met yet, the new homeowners get on with their project. The other thing that I wanted to say to you tonight is I've noticed that this process has gone on so long, so I hope you can decide tonight to give some resolution and let these guys get started on their project. I'm sure it's a huge expense and hardship for this to be going on so long. And one last thing that probably is not relevant, but I wanted to tell you that us, the Madera Gardens neighbors, and we have several here tonight, are very excited for you to come into our neighborhood, and we're looking forward to that happening very soon. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Leela Mongan. I live at 72 Mohawk in Madera Gardens. I've been there for eight years. My husband and I are raising our family there, and we plan to spend the rest of our lives there. We joke that when we're too old to drive, we'll be able to walk over to the town center together. And, you know, I think one of the things, probably the thing we love most about this neighborhood is the sense of community, and how supportive neighbors are of each other. And I guess I feel like this is part of that, when people have really tried to be accommodating to their neighbors and are in need of some extra space, we all have growing families, and these are small houses, that we should accommodate that where we can. So I would urge you to deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Mongan. Like my wife, I've lived here for eight years, and I've spent most of my life in Marin. And I just, you know, we haven't met the applicants, and I don't, haven't had the pleasure of meeting their immediate neighbors or the appellants either, but I hope that I'll have a chance to get to know all of them, because they all seem like really wonderful people. And I think that that's what makes our neighborhood great, is that it's got a lot of good people and that we're very welcoming. And I think being welcoming can have its limits, and nobody likes McMansions, and, you know, I understand this is an important process to make sure that people don't do things that are wildly out of character with the neighborhood. But I've looked at the story polls from all perspectives, and it strikes me as a quite reasonable proposal. And it seems like as a process matter, these folks have really been over backwards to try and be accommodating and to be reasonable. And, you know, I think that part of being welcoming is understanding, especially when folks have a new member of their family on their way, that when you have someone in a very small footprint house, and we have the exact same footprint house, just over 1,300 square foot, that you might need a little bit more breathing room. And, you know, a reasonable 500-square-foot addition, I hope is something that the town can accommodate, especially given everything that they've gone through. I guess the last point I would make is that if we're not able to accommodate these types of reasonable additions, there is a real practical cost to that, and that is that families, growing families, leave the neighborhood. And there's a history with this house. I haven't met the appellants, but I've known the previous two families that lived in this house. They were great people, they were great members of the community, and they left this neighborhood to move to places where they could get a bigger house. And maybe part of that thinking was that an addition process would be fraught and costly and complicated. So I appreciate your time and listening to all of us, and thank you for your service, and I hope that the council will approve this, this proposal.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Brown, and I live at 38 Mohawk. I also have not met the applicant family, but I'm looking forward to meeting them. I can speak firsthand, I just had my third child, and it's crazy, but you'll be fine. But, you know, our homes are small, and I'm living in a three-bedroom, one-bathroom house, and my family, you know, it's cramped, and I get it. And, you know, I just, I feel like our neighborhood is so, just like, you know, all these people have just spoken, our neighborhood is so wonderful. We have so many great families who are, you know, who've moved into this neighborhood, who are sending our kids to these schools, and who love, you know, kind of thinking about this place as somewhere where we will live and raise our families. So, you know, I just, I want to also speak, you know, having not met them yet, but on their behalf, just to say, you know, that I think that this is, seems very reasonable, and that they've gone through so much due process to make it happen. So I'm hoping that you will deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Judy Arzuruni, and I'm one of the three homes on Lakeside Drive that is impacted by this addition. And it's been very hard for me to deal with this, because they are a wonderful couple, and I want them to be happy with this, their new addition that's coming. And yet, I think we cannot forget the impact that this does make on the neighbors adjacent to this house. It is, how can I describe it? Having, having windows looking right down into your yard, and I did visit Inga Morrison, she has more than the intrusion of, into her yard, it's into her house. She has sliding glass doors, she has a hallway. I imagined it at night with the lights on, and she's going to have to do something to cover all of that up, because those windows look directly down into her whole yard. The neighbor next door to her, my immediate neighbor, is going to have that one big window looking directly down into her yard also, and her patio, and the back of her home. I feel personally, I, I am not that disturbed by it, because I have a lot of growth in the backyard. I have trees in that corner, which will, I think, help me. So I, I, we cannot forget what other people are sacrificing in order to have this kind of thing happen, and I'm hoping that, that we won't have that domino effect that has been mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing, okay. If anybody else is going to speak after this lady, will you please come around and cue up?
Hi, my name is Hillary Costin. I live at 101 Sandpiper, but my daughter Caitlin and her family live on Mohawk, and I've gotten to know Madera Gardens quite well. And I want to stand up for these young people who are moving into this community and revitalizing it, and using the schools, and providing a huge tax base for, for the town, and what, how great it is for this town to have this. Most towns don't. And it's because of its location that it has become essential for many of these young people to live in a place where they can send their kids to public schools, where they're paying a whole lot more than the house was ever intended to be paid for, or is, in my mind, worth, having lived long enough to remember what these houses cost. And the people that have lived here a long time are benefiting so much from the rising value of the houses. Every time a house is improved in any way in this neighborhood, the neighborhood becomes more valuable. And I just wanted to say that, because I really want to stand up for, as an older person, what these younger people are bringing to this community, and how we should welcome them, and respect them, and value them, and be good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment. And now we'll have five minutes' time for a rebuttal by the applicant.
Hi, my name is Erica Bosnanski. I'm one of the homeowners of 22 Seminole, and this is my husband Blake. When we first drove up to 22 Seminole when it was on the market, we immediately fell in love with the house and the community, and we knew it was going to be our forever home when we walked into that house. Blake and I have had the great fortune of growing up in the same house, being in that community, having and growing with all those kids in the neighborhood, and we want to set the same precedent and values for our kids. So to, one of the concerns that came up about, will we be flipping this house? Absolutely not. Like, this is why we're going through the time to invest in going through- Like, this is why we're going through the time to invest and going through this whole process because we really want our kids to be raised within a community and have ties to that community. It's something that we value and that's why we're not in the house right now is because we're still in San Francisco because we didn't want to pull our kids from the community during their school year and in transition because we were so important, it was so important to us that we keep that. We have two boys, a five-year-old and a three-year-old, and they love this house. They get so excited every time we, we go to the house. About riding their bikes, playing in the neighborhood, you name it. We have a third child on the way. I'm thirty-seven and a half weeks pregnant and for point of reference, that's when I delivered my second child. So we're on the clock here.
Be ready.
So we are so excited to set up roots in this neighborhood and we are just so eager to get started and meet our neighbors and get involved in the community and invest in the community.
And what's been so great, when we have come up, we came up for Fourth of July, we've come up every other week to kind of make sure that we're being a part of the neighborhood, everyone's stopping by, welcoming us, saying they have children of their, our kids' age, that they want to set up play dates, they want to get together. And we couldn't feel more welcoming. So we were surprised that, you know, that we were appealed for this because we put so much time, so much effort. You heard from everything that we've done. We've done so much back and forth. We started looking at this before we hired our architect about what we could do. He was very great about like guiding us on what we can do, what we can do to mitigate things. I mean, for us to change our master bedroom to the back, to the front of our house, it was a big deal. But we heard from the appellants to say like that was an issue that they had, privacy. So we took those windows out. There are no windows that look overlooked. So when you talk about at night going across, one, we don't want to look out. We don't want people to look into our home as well. So in that back, there are those clear story windows high that we're not going to be looking out because that's our bathroom. And then it's going to be our nursery, you know, you know, the kid is not going to want to have light coming in there. We don't want to have those windows open. We want it to be as quiet and as calm as possible. So we're very excited to be a part of the neighborhood. We felt so welcome already. We're excited to actually have this behind us so we can actually move forward with this. So please help us kind of realize our dream and be in a home that we want to be in forever. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the same, we have five minutes for the appellant.
I don't think I'll take five minutes, but if I can make a couple of closing comments. Thank you for that opportunity. This appeal is not an anti-kid referendum. It's hard to, hard to argue with all the positive sentiments around children existing and forthcoming. But I do want to make a comment that focuses again on the staff report that you have in front of you this evening. The staff talks about a finding, actually evidence that purports to support a finding, that the project achieves the objectives of the zoning ordinance and general plan because it improves the quality and livability of the home for the occupants. And it talks about thoughtful and well-designed improvements and that are consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood. I just want to close by saying that all due respect to children and lovely young families, and I'm not being ironic in saying that, but there are larger objectives of your planning documents. I don't disagree with Mr. Hurd's characterization of what your general plan is intended to do. I don't disagree that the building of an individual home doesn't by itself set legal precedent. I do disagree that as a practical matter, the allowance of a one-second story won't trigger other second stories. It will. I think that's common sense and I've seen it. I think you may have seen it as well. So when your staff says to you that, and no disrespect to staff, they, they work hard, they do a good job and they have indeed been thorough, but when they say that the improvements are consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood and do so in a way which avoids any significant negative impacts to surrounding property owners, I want to just state to you that my client is going to experience an enormously significant negative impact. And the character of this neighborhood, again, whether you define it as a quarter-mile radius or you define it as a hundred-yard radius, is not a second-story character. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, now, my fellow councilmembers, any questions of either our appellant or applicant or staff? Yes?
I have one question.
Sure.
No matter how we determine it right now, if on a go-forward basis, the folks in this particular neighborhood, and by that I mean sort of Mohawk, Mamona, Seminole, if they feel strongly that they would like it to be downzoned a single story, is that something the town could do? If we want to do?
I think certainly there are ways to revisit certain height limitations or restrictions on particular areas of town due to some land use rationale that sort of describes, you know, clarity, some objectives that we're trying to achieve. So obviously that, to this point, we haven't done that. We have one, we have a sort of a, a consistent height limit in most of our, if not all of our, single-family residential districts. But there's, there's, there's always ability to revisit and look at those neighborhoods on a case-by-case basis if that's something that the town council wants to direct staff to look at or if we, based on some, its own volition or based on some community concerns that through the council is directed to ask us to proceed with.
The reason why I ask is if you sort of look at the historical design of this town, those streets are one of the few streets still remaining in Madera Gardens that are sort of the original one-story bungalow layout that, you know, was sort of originally built here in the nineteen fifties. You know, everywhere else in Madera Gardens, we've sort of upgraded and add second stories and built it out. But, you know, that, the streets that you showed earlier with sort of Mohawk, Seminole, Mamona, that area, that's sort of typical of Cordera Suburbia circa nineteen fifty. It's close we've come to a historical district.
I had a quick question.
Yes.
I understand from the staff report that this project is not triggering the need to raise the entire structure up out of the flood zone. If it had been a more, a larger project that encompassed an improvement greater than fifty percent, that would have triggered those requirements. What are those requirements? I'm kind of curious, like, let's say a neighbor decided to undergo a significant renovation that triggered that, how high would they need to raise their home?
So it, it varies. It's a, it varies throughout town. In this case, I, I can't speak to this particular location. Sometimes that may be a foot. Sometimes that may be three feet. It really depends on the location. In this case, as noted in the, in the staff report from January ninth, the general, kind of how it works is that, you know, we, we ask for, at the time of design review submittal, sort of a, an estimate of the cost of the improvements, the proposed improvements over the course of the last five years, including what they, you know, what the applicant plans to do. And we look at that relative to the appraised value of the structure itself and not the, not the property, but the improvements. In this case, based on that, those preliminary figures, it doesn't appear that it would be required to be raised.
Right. Do you happen to know though what the requirements are in that neighborhood? Between the one foot and the three feet, do you have any sense of what that particular neighborhood might require?
I don't. I do know that there, there are homes in the neighborhood that have raised, have been raised. I believe even from the last, last hearing, one of the neighbors spoke and, and mentioned that their, you know, their house across, across the street had been raised. But I, I can't speak to that. It's, it's determined on a, on a site-by-site.
Got it.
Yeah, and just, just to add a little bit to that, there's, we require that houses be raised to base flood elevation of eleven feet. And a lot of, we've seen examples of some of the houses in the neighborhood. Again, it does vary site-by-site, but are currently at about seven or so or around there. So it's a, it's good four feet. It can be four feet. We've seen three feet, four feet, five feet. But I think that's an important thing to point out, moving forward as well, that some of these houses will be raised considerably. Again, anywhere three to six feet, could be more, depending on where they are, as significant additions. And it's, it's, it's a fifty percent threshold. So as soon as the improvements reach fifty percent or more of the appraised value of the structure, that's when it triggers that requirement to raise the house.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then I will close it to the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to council for deliberation. Who would like to begin?
Are we supposed to, I'm sorry, I have one more question. Are we supposed to disclose if we visited the property or is that?
I would suggest that each of the council members take a turn to disclose any ex-party communications. And if you've visited the property, you can provide some detail there.
Thanks.
And I, yes, I visited the property. I met with both the applicant and the appellant at their homes and spent a considerable amount of time on each site, looking at and also walking around the neighborhood.
Okay, I've visited the applicant. I've also visited the appellant. Looked at both houses. I spent a lot of time walking around the neighborhood. I also live five or six blocks away, so I go by there fairly often, so.
I visited the neighborhood, walked it, viewed the story polls. I did not go on either actual property, but I did walk around the block and view the story polls from all different directions.
Okay, I did go visit both the property on Seminole and the appellant's property and both from inside and outside. Okay, who would like to go first?
If nobody wants to, I will.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
All right. I, I think we've heard from many of the neighbors that it's a very desirable neighborhood. I like to think of all of Cordera as being very desirable. But I understand the sense of community and the, the sense of ownership that each of the neighbors has expressed, regardless of where they stand on this issue. That being said, I think we need to be careful that we don't tie the, the value that we hold of our property to qualities that are not something that you really own, that you really hold. I believe strongly that we need to allow our families to improve their homes, to accommodate growing families, to accommodate a home-based business, to accommodate a grandparent who may be providing childcare or may be in early throes of something like dementia. I know my family went through that with my grandmother and we had a very small home, about twelve hundred square feet, one bathroom. And it was not easy, a family of four plus a grandparent. Families need some flexibility. I think the, you know, somebody said something about that housing prices are related to the neighborhood of one-story homes. I don't think we can say that for, you know, for sure. I think that the fact that our community is desirable is for a lot of different reasons. It's because it's great neighbors. We're close to San Francisco, which makes commutes easy. We're close to shopping. We're walkable. We have great schools. We have all kinds of different things. I don't think a very modest second-story addition that has undergone several changes to ensure that the impacts on the neighbors are really very modest is going to affect resale values in that neighborhood. If anything, I think sending the signal that people are not encouraged and welcome to make improvements to their home, whether it's a second story or not, whether it's an addition or just simply, whether it's an improvement like updating energy efficiency or a kitchen or a bathroom, we need to send the signal that people have a right to do those kinds of improvements with their property. Otherwise, they're not going to be wanting to invest a million-plus dollars in these homes. I don't think the massing of the addition is in any way inappropriate. I don't think it's significantly imposing. I don't think it has a significant detriment to the privacy. Is there, you know, will it be, be something that can be seen by the appellant's home? Yes, but I, you know, you can plainly see in those photos that the story polls are really quiet at a distance. And I think with the planting that has been proposed, that will certainly be mitigated to be minimal. I also think it's important to point out that these neighborhoods were not built to allow every homeowner maximum privacy. That's not what the suburbs is about. If you want that much privacy, go buy five acres in the country. What I am pleased about is that the windows have been raised up so that the sight from person to person will really be minimized. And that should afford everybody the maximum amount of privacy that, that an addition like this can provide. And finally, I want to simply kind of throw something out for people to consider. Let's say that this home was undergoing a massive renovation, single-story, that put it above that fifty percent threshold. And it might have required the entire home to be raised up, as you heard, between one and four feet, maybe even five feet. This is not something that is really beyond the realm of possibility. You've heard that it's happened elsewhere in the neighborhood. So I can foresee a time that the next-door neighbor is going to complain that raising a home four feet is going to affect privacy. Do we say, no, you can't do that? Well, that would be silly. We need to, you know, address flooding. The town has invested a ton of money in infrastructure, but, you know, our flood control infrastructure is never a hundred percent reliable. Things break, you know, we do our best and, you know, we've been really lucky. We haven't had a major flood since the early eighties. But I want you to think very seriously about what would happen if your next-door neighbor had to raise their home four feet. These are the kinds of things that we are going to be talking about in the future. So with that, I will say I personally feel that it's, that we can make the findings on this project and leaning towards denying the appeal. But I look forward to hearing what my fellow council members say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. These things would be much easier if everybody in this town wasn't so darn nice. Makes it a lot harder. But it also is what makes it such a great town to live in. And it's always difficult when we're faced with these kinds of decisions because everyone's trying to do the best thing for everybody else. Without going into too much detail, I can certainly relate to what you're going through. We moved here twenty-eight years ago. There was a nine-hundred-square-foot cottage on the lot next to us. The neighbors came in, bought it, and they put in a thirty-three-hundred-square-foot house on a seventy-five-hundred-square-foot lot, five foot from our property line. We're still very good friends with them to this day. We sat down, we worked through the whole thing with them. But also, and I think, we had, we did never had an expectation that nothing was ever going to be built there, that wasn't going to be large. We knew we were living in a suburban neighborhood where the houses were close together. We had improved our house. This was an improvement, a large improvement. And it triggered a lot of other improvement in the neighborhood, which in general has been a very, very good thing. It's difficult. It's hard. It happens. been a very, very good thing. It's difficult. It's hard. It happens. Looking at the specifics of this, this is a very modest addition. This is significantly below the floor area ratio. I think the maximum floor area ratio in this house would be 2,800 square feet on a 7,000-square-foot lot. So, you know, I think with the addition, it's going to be 1,900 square feet. It's six feet below the height limit. So in general, this is not a giant change, you know, to what could be done theoretically. What I like a lot about what the applicant has done here is they have worked with the neighbors. They have clearly gone through a long process and spent a great deal of time to try to solve everybody's problems on this. And you're never going to solve everybody's problems, but they have certainly tried. Moving the master bedroom from the rear with a mount, view of Mount Tam to the front of the house, I think, was a huge accommodation for the neighbors. And it, and it gets down to really, for me, there's one word in the findings that I, I spent a lot of time looking at, and that's the issue of privacy. I understand the privacy issue. I stood in your backyard for a long time. I stood in the house. I looked at it. But they have done everything they realistically can, I think, to accommodate privacy, with the windows, moving the bedroom. I think they've really done about everything they can. Finally, they don't have any other real options for expanding this property. You know, I think we heard, you know, going onto the first floor, first off, I think that creates more problems of it being unattractive to the rest of the neighbors. And we also heard about the whole issues with having to raise the house, you know, it would create, I just think, something that just wouldn't work aesthetically. So for all of those reasons, I can make the findings and do make the findings, and I would recommend that we reject the appeal.
Thank you, Bob. Jim, you ready?
Yeah, I can, I agree with Bob. I can also make the findings. I realize that Madera Gardens is a neighborhood of single-family homes, and this one area is primarily one-story single-family homes. But if that, the applicant is going to expand the house, given the size of the lot and where the existing house is located, going up is basically the only choice he has. You know, the other alternative is just scrape the lot and rebuild, but I think then you could easily end up with a, something that looks more like a McMansion. There's a house over on Mohawk where they have actually had to elevate it. It's a sort of brown clabbert, and it's, I think, it's up, what, four feet? Three, four feet? And so if the applicant was going to spread out horizontally, which would be very difficult for them to do, the whole height of the house would be even higher. So I think, given the trade-offs that they've had to make, they did a fairly good job in a very difficult situation, so.
Okay, thank you, Jim. This particular issue just kind of stirred up my memory. Back in the early 2000s, when we were working on the general plan and housing element, a group of us had the benefit of a planner that took us around town and evaluated each neighborhood and where he could foresee it going in the future. And the one thing that really stuck in my mind was when we went over to Mariner Cove on the Bayside, where everything was single-story but for maybe a couple of homes. And he said, right now you're looking at a tract. But he said, I guarantee you, if you don't make your planning requirements too stringent or unfair, too restrictive, he said, in 10, 15 years, this area is not going to be a tract. It is going to be so valuable, because everybody will sooner or later turn it into a custom home. And that's what they've done. And so what was once literally a tract has now become one of the most sought-after neighborhoods. And I look at Madera Gardens the same way, that Madera Gardens was able to resist that single-story mantra for so many years. But in driving around, I, which I did, there are two-story homes. This isn't original. It's not a new thought. And I went to both of, both of the properties, as I mentioned, and I felt, when I went to Ms. Morrison's property, that it probably was frustrating, perplexing, maybe sad, that there was change, and that she was seeing change. But the change, after looking at so many homes, having served on planning commission and, and with the council, the, I don't want to say it's incidental, because that would be minimizing what it is to her. But the efforts were made that the windows that even don't look directly down on the property but are, you know, to the adjacent property, that they're clear-story windows that nobody's going to see unless they decide to stand on a ladder and look down. It's not going to happen. And so I felt that, that it was actually the structure that was impacting the privacy, not the idea that these clear-story windows were really affecting it. And I think that Ms. Morrison's objections would have been much more real if no windows were put there, and it was just a blank wall. I think that, that that would be objectionable to her as well. But the way I saw it was that it is change, and it's sometimes really hard to accept change. But I felt that the change was an improvement, improvement, not only to the, to 22 Seminole, but to the surrounding homes as well. I felt that a lot of effort had been taken to articulate that second story, so that there wasn't a mass, that I was there at 9:30 in the morning in the shadow in the backyard, wouldn't even go into the backyard on Lakeside. And that was such a limited time. But I felt that it was certainly an improvement to the neighborhood, that there were no variances, that there was no issue about parking, lot coverage, height, floor area setbacks. So the only comment that I would have that I don't know if we want to change, I found that it was very, very onerous that the planning commission even went to the extent of dictating the, what was it, the pitasporum or the potocarpus on that. I, I felt that that was, you know, a, a big thing to, to put on the owners of 22 Seminole. But if that's going to be the way it is, that's the way it is. If, if my fellow council members wanted to remove that, I would entertain that. But at any rate, we've heard each other, so do I hear a motion?
Well, I'm curious if there's anybody else who's interested in taking out the requirement for that planting. I could go along with it if, if there are others who support that as well.
I think it's, I think it's something that's really onerous on staff to be put in a position to monitor plants. And I think that the same result would be if they were just planted on the other side of the fence.
I don't think they can be. Is there room?
But it says, any, can I, can I just read from the, page six of the, of the resolution number five slash 2018. So page six, under landscaping, paragraph four, "The applicants shall plant one 24-inch box potocarpus, or two pitasporum, or other plantings that the applicant's choosing," yada, yada. "These plantings must be in place at the time that construction commences and be maintained. Any proposed changes to the plantings that provide the screening described herein must be approved by Planning Department." So, and I'm trying to see, okay, so where does it talk about the screening? I just don't want this to be a case where, yeah, the, the town has to monitor the
I would, I would concur with that. I'm never a big fan of stuff that you can't enforce. And if that is indeed the case, then I, I would support that. I don't, but I don't see it. I mean, as I read it, it just says that they have to plant them.
The number six.
It doesn't specify height, but it says that they must be maintained.
So if it dies, it has to be replanted?
It doesn't say what height they have to be at, or...
But it says that it must be approved by, by the Planning Department. I mean, I, I just think that if they were, I don't know what the planning area is there, but even if the, the hardscape around the pool was there, that at least there could be decorative box planters. But I, I just think that it's, it's a bit onerous.
All right. I found where it discusses the, the screening, that is on page four, middle of the page, the very end of the second paragraph under number three. "The addition of plantings to the northwest corner of the property would fill in a gap of the existing shrubbery and trees, providing supplementary screening that would protect the privacy of the applicants and the occupants of 27 Lakeside Drive."
So again, I'm not seeing any kind of requirement that the town monitor what's going on.
Well, just that the Planning Department would have to approve any proposed changes to that.
Right. That's pretty standard, isn't it?
We would just require that it's planted.
Yeah.
Obviously, that it gets under...
That's pretty standard on most...
Yeah, whenever we have a landscape plan, for example, with a project, that it goes in, we make sure that that's part of the approval process.
And there's usually a requirement for the size of the tree in the box, and you just make sure they put it in.
We have made, we have code requirements.
The town's responsibility usually depends at that point, right?
But then, think of a certain, certain shopping center that's supposed to have planting on the freeway side.
Let's not get into the weeds.
And how many repeated hearings have we had to have over the years?
Seriously, Jim, let's not get into the weeds on the village, okay?
We do, we do look at, I mean, we, we do go back to the plans that were approved if there ever is an issue amongst questions about prior approvals or design review, and we make sure that those, to the best of our ability, that those landscape plans are adhered to. So, I mean, it is something that is part of our ongoing work.
Yeah. And just, you know, to your point, and sort of reviewing the findings and looking at the connection there, if it's the council's opinion that the finding can be made without that condition, you can certainly remove that. It can be modified. It's, yeah, it's, it's up to you. If you see that connection between that planting as necessary to make those findings, if you simply encourage it because you think it would be beneficial, I mean, there's obviously a range of options relating to that specific condition.
Okay, so then, again, I'll come back to, do you want to do that? Do you want to leave it as is? Do you want to use the word encourage? Or do you want to pull it all together?
Can I ask a question of council? So is this written in such a way that there creates a condition whereby the town is going to be forced to check and maintain the screening and make sure that it's appropriate height and is maintained in a way that maintains privacy?
As I, as I am seeing it, I don't, I'm not seeing a height requirement, and so there would be no height requirement. It's a, it needs to be put in and maintained. To the extent a plant would die, it would, the property owner would need to replace it in a timely way. Could that issue percolate its way to staff if the plant were to die or be removed and not replaced? It could. But there isn't a height, a specific height requirement. You can leave it as it is. You could make those requirements if you feel that it's a necessary part of the approval. You could take it out entirely, or as the suggestion has been given, you could just say that you would encourage the applicant to do it, which would be not a binding requirement, but it would be an encouragement.
I just didn't know if it would preclude...
Yeah, personally, I'm, I'm okay with this the way it is. This is, I think, pretty standard language that is in a lot of different projects. I think it is a nice, you know, concession to the appellant. It does make sure that, you know, there is an attempt, and I think it, you know, creates a spirit of cooperation between both parties that's going to try to screen this from them. So I, I'm fine with leaving it in. I don't see...
Okay.
I think, I think it potentially creates more issues if you take it out, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, then.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move to, let's see, hold on. Deny the appeal, am I saying this right, to deny the appeal and approve resolution numbers five slash 2018, which is denying the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision and approving design review application number PL dash 2017 dash 0125, thereby allowing the construction of a 542-square-foot addition at 22 Seminole Avenue.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Councilmember Avazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes. And that was approved, and Councilmember Bailey abstained.
Uh, recused.
Recused, sorry, recused himself. Okay, thank you all for sitting through this. And we'll move along. And Adam, you're on for the public hearing for consideration and possible adoption of general plan amendments to land use element of the Cordera General Plan, amending, one, base housing densities and maximum floor area ratios in areas designated mixed-use, commercial, on the town's general plan land use diagram. And number two, the land use designation, the land use designation of the town's gravel lot located on Redwood Highway, from mixed-use, region-serving commercial to region-serving, region-serving commercial, to region-serving commercial? Oh, we're taking out the mixed use, okay. And three, modifying related general plan texts where necessary for consistency with above amendments. Adam?
Thank you.
Is there anything left for me to say?
Yeah, right, thank you, Adam. Mayor, council members, I'll try to go through this relatively briefly. You have my staff report in front of you. You also have a draft resolution, which is attachment one to the staff report, which follows the Planning Commission's recommendation on this item. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on January 9th, and I'll get into some of the details on that in a moment, but they did recommend approval of the general plan amendments, and recommended that the commission consider some additional aspects as well as part of their consideration in looking at the general plan amendments. So this public hearing is to receive information and public comments and consider, as you mentioned, the possible amendments to the Corredera General Plan. The town council is the final decision-making body on this item. Just to start, there's two different aspects of the proposed general plan amendment. Both of them stem from prior conversations and discussions that the town council has had during review of previous applications. And so in some, actually, this is a, a follow-up to a prior direction that was given by the, the town council during, if you'll recall, the MX one zoning discussion back in October of 2016, and also more recently, the December 2017 town council discussion regarding the gravel lot and the land use designation for that parcel. Maybe I'll, just given, that's sort of the easy one, I might take this a little bit out of order and just talk about the gravel lot first.
Madam Mayor, do you mind if I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
Adam, can you just tell me what, what is the, I see there's proposed resolutions or something.
Absolutely.
At the end of the day, what would you like to have happen?
So staff's recommending that we have included a draft resolution for the council to consider and potentially adopt. That resolution would make changes to Corredera's general plan.
Got it.
Can also modify the resolution. I will note that any, any significant changes to the proposed amendment as stated in the, in the resolution that were not considered by the Planning Commission are required to go back to the Planning Commission and be remanded back to them for further consideration. That's the, through the California Government Code. So to start, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna start actually with, as I mentioned, with the gravel lot, just because that one, I think, is quick and, and we can get through that pretty quickly. As you'll recall, on December fifth, 2017, in the discussion of the RH gallery and the Village Expansion Project, part of that application was to change the general plan land use designation of the town's gravel lot from what was wetlands and marshlands to, at the time, it was, we proposed and was adopted, mixed use, region-serving commercial. There was a discussion by the council and had some concerns about the implications of labeling it that when some, some of the regional agencies may come up and, and look at our general plan map and say, hey, you have land available for development of housing in the future, and therefore that may affect some of the projections going forward. So the council asked that staff come back and follow up and look toward another designation that would not include that mixed use designation. Obviously, this, all of this is, is, doesn't affect, doesn't impact the, the project that the commission, that the council looked at. And also, as you know, there are proposed development agreements. There's other restrictions to the property that wouldn't allow housing or any other commercial uses on that site as well. So the proposal is to change it from the mixed use, region-serving commercial, which is, and I'm, I don't have a pointer, I'll try to, which is right here, it's the same color as the village itself, and it would change it to this red color, which is region-serving commercial. So, pretty simple. That would be that portion of the general plan amendment. Any questions on that? And, okay. So I'll go back to the second part of this, which is a little bit more involved.
I'm sorry, can I ask my question now, do you mind? Madam Mayor, can I ask the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. I understand that this has been proposed as a way to address perceived concerns by the council. Is it your recommendation unrelated to those concerns? That this is a good idea or a bad idea?
Well, I, I think it actually, there's, there's little impact, in my view, either way, in terms of what the designation is, as long as it allows for the uses that the town council agreed to in the development agreement approval, which allows for the parking uses.
And all of which is consistent?
It was consistent with both.
Okay.
I mean, I, so I, I'm, I'm sort of agnostic on this one in terms of what, which way we go here.
No, thank you, Adam.
Okay, so it's, in terms of the second part of this, this relates to a follow-up item. Back to October 2016, where we talked about the Tamil Vista corridor and implementing new zoning in that area of town, which again was the east side of Tamil Vista Boulevard between Madera Boulevard and Wornham Drive, basically from the Best Western up to the DMV site. So just for, I wanted to sort of give a little bit of background and context here because this, this does, I've gotten some number of questions that this, this can be confusing, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the relationship between the general plan and the zoning ordinance. So as you recall, essentially, the general plan defines the intended range of allowable land uses and the intensity and density of those uses for all properties in the town. And this is done by creating these land use designations that specify the intended type and the intensity of land uses. And then it maps them on the land, land use diagram, which also lives in the general plan. Both of these things live in the land use element of the general plan. So this, on this slide, what you're looking at is the land use designation for the mixed use commercial land use designation. And I will show you on the next slide, that's the light blue color here on this land use diagram. So it is a substantial part, it applies to a substantial number of properties in town, the vast majority of which are currently commercial or non-residential uses. So you have the area up here, you have Tamil Plaza, you have, we already talked about this area at length, Tamil Pious Drive, as well as Casa Buena has a number of properties, and then a huge amount of properties of San Clemente Place. And then this is actually the Restoration Hardware Gallery, or their offices, I should say, at this point. So going back, I want to point out just that the land use designation in the general plan, mixed use commercial, allows for fifteen point one, as you can see in bold at the bottom of the screen here, approximate development density from fifteen point one to twenty-five unit, dwelling units per gross acre and up to thirty-one. You can exceed that with the state density bonus. So while this general plan lays out the overarching land use policy for the town, again, through these land use designations, the zoning ordinance still dictates what you can build on a specific parcel. Talks about what the allowable uses are, conditional uses that are allowed, development standards like height and setbacks and those sorts of requirements. That's all dictated by the zoning, zoning ordinance. And with that in mind, what we had in, in the Tamil Vista Boulevard area, where we came up with the mixed use zoning district was to create consistency between what the zoning allowed before, as you recall, it was C three district, which didn't allow residential uses. And in October of 2016, the town adopted the MX one district, the mixed use zoning district that allowed for residential uses for the first time in that area. And it allowed, after extensive outreach and a public consultation process, fifteen point one units an acre. I'm sorry, yes, dwelling units per acre in that MX one area, Tamil Vista Boulevard. Those specific regulations are shown here. So you have, again, the zoning now that applies to this Tamil Vista corridor area, is what I guess I call it, and it's, it is sort of embedded into now the zoning district. You can see that these are the actual regulations now that apply there. A maximum permitted residential density shall be fifteen point one units an acre. I will note, in the next section, eighteen thirteen one five oh, there's a specific provision that allows up to twenty units an acre for projects that include senior housing. These are densities that are exclusive of the state density bonus, just to make that clear, which again is consistent with what the general plan said. So we had what, here's what's talked about in the general plan, fifteen to twenty-five, they have a range. And then the MX one has fifteen point one units an acre. Again, twenty units an acre for senior, senior housing exclusive of the state density bonus. So at the time when this was discussed, the town council had some concerns about this mismatch, I think it was called at the time. And the note, the minutes are all included in the, in the, those attachments to the staff report about sort of this range in one, in one instance, and then a specific density allowed at fifteen point one units an acre in the zoning. And we, we, staff at the time said we, we could come back and add some clarity to that situation, and here we are doing that and are recommending that we, in fact, change the general plan to make sure that it also says fifteen point one units an acre and twenty units an acre for senior housing exclusive of state density bonus, to make those entirely consistent, harmonize them, if you will. And so that, that's the first piece of what the general plan amendment would do. And that would apply specifically to the Tamil Vista corridor area. At the same time, though, we recognize that there are many other areas that also currently have this range of fifteen to twenty-five units an acre that aren't the Tamil Vista corridor area. There's no zoning yet for these areas that would allow for housing, but potentially, we could be in a position where we would need to consider new zoning that would allow for housing in these areas. So we currently, again, have this range of fifteen to twenty-five exclusive of the state density bonus in these other areas of town. And so we are recommending that, we did recommend to the Planning Commission and are recommending, again, that the, the town council consider and adopt a specific unit per acre number that development would be held to in these other areas as well. So I think one of the objectives, and we point, and I point this out in the staff report, of the Tamil Vista corridor study was that we can use some of that information and some of the study, the exercise that we, that we went through in developing the regulations for the Tamil Vista corridor area. It's reasonable to use that as a starting point to apply those elsewhere to other areas that are similarly within the land, mixed use commercial land use designation, the blue, like blue areas, and use that as a starting point. That was one of the objectives that we had all along with the Tamil Vista corridor, that perhaps we should pull in from that process, whatever we could, that would be potentially applicable to other areas without having to go through a same type of intensive study for each of these other areas. So, that being said, the, the, what you have in front of you, you went to the Planning Commission with, with sort of the same presentation. The Planning Commission recommended that, that fifteen point one units per acre be applied to these other areas as well. And also recommended that the council carry over from the Tamil Vista corridor a maximum FAR limitation of point four zero, which is, those are the regulations that the town adopted for the Tamil Vista Boulevard area. And the Planning Commission recommended that those get pulled in and be applied to the other areas in the general plan, in, in the general plan. So I hope, what I've done there is, now, is to sort of provide some examples of existing residential development and their existing FAR, their existing units per acre, just to get a sense of what that is, what that looks like. And so there's a sort of a, you get a sense of whether that number fifteen point one is appropriate for the areas in the light blue on the town, on the, on the general plan land use diagram. As you, you've seen, this was approved in 2015, fourteen, it's under construction right now. You'll see it's a thirteen point six units an acre with the density bonus, point five seven FAR, that does not count the garages. I've, these are also, were included in your staff report, so I don't necessarily need to go all, through all these, but I just wanted, if you wanted to look at one or two, please let me know. All the FARs are in here, so you can sort of look at what point four zero would look like as setting that policy in comparison to some of other, other projects around. This is fourteen forty-one Casa Buena, on the lower end, clearly, of both FAR and density in terms of housing density. That's that project, which, if you haven't actually looked at it recently, I recommend going out there. It's, it's undergone a sort of a major, I think, upgrade in terms of its appearance and project. The San Clemente Place, you can see twenty-eight, it's a much more dense project, point six FAR, higher with the garages. And that's the, the character of that. This is one we looked at during the Tamil Vista corridor study in Mill Valley, five oh five Miller, includes both commercial and residential, seventeen point six units an acre, and approximately point five FAR, point, the residential portion of that, it was point four two and the commercial, point zero eight. San Piper Circle, again, just another example, right around the actual floor area ratio, a point four that's allowed in the Tamil Vista corridor area, but a lower density. So the proposed actual text change of the general plan is included as an exhibit to the resolution. So if you look on page seven of the draft resolution six slash 2018, you can see actually how the text of the general plan would actually change, or is proposed to be changed. And the land use diagram, as I mentioned, would only change with respect to the gravel lot. And I think importantly, one was we wanted to make sure that we had the consistent general plan to go with the zoning that was adopted for Tamil Vista Boulevard, but also address this issue of having an existing range of housing density in the other areas of town, which, which frankly, isn't really a, I would, I think that it's better to look at it from the perspective of, the maximum allowable there is twenty-five units an acre. And there, in, in most circumstances, or in several circumstances, there's, that's really what you have to look at in terms of what would be allowed if, if we had a proposal come in for housing density in those areas. So we think it's better to set the policy with a specific number rather than this range, which I think, frankly, has, is, is a little bit misleading to think that we can actually hold a development or lower density of a development that comes in maybe at twenty-five to something like seventeen or eighteen. And so I think the, the recommendation is to really, we went to the Planning Commission with the recommendation to just pick a number between fifteen and twenty-five, set that for the other areas. And the Planning Commission recommended that, that the town council go with the fifteen point one units an acre. So I, I hope that wasn't too, too confusing, but I'm happy to answer questions and on any of this, and, and, yes.
Yes, okay, the base density would be fifteen point one. If they go for their full bonus, it'd be multiplied by one point two five, or nineteen. Okay?
You're talking about state density bonus?
Whichever density bonus
Sure.
they could use, okay? And if it's oldster housing, base would be twenty. And if they went for the full bonus, it could be as high as twenty-five, okay? But also, I vaguely recall that if you went for the bonus, you could also ask for concessions.
Concessions, that's right.
Would the FAR ratio be one of the concessions they could talk about?
Absolutely.
Okay, and what are the other ones? Or in the, how many?
Any develop, so there's developments, exemptions to the development standards, and a concession also could be for something like, as we saw in fourteen twenty-five, Casa Buena height was a concession. We now do have an ordinance, though, that requires that, I think the standard is that it has to relate to, and I'm not going to get the wording exactly right, but it has to relate to the actual ability to- it has to relate to the actual ability to, um, produce the project with the required amount of low income or lower income residential units. So we now have an ordinance in place that requires that information to be provided to the town, or the state, you know, that, um, in advance to make that argument. Um, but yes, it, it is not, if that, you know, that would be reviewed, but that would be a, uh, it's up to the applicant to really, um, choose which concession they wish to, um, apply for.
Okay.
Um, and just, I think the actual maximum bonus under the state density, density bonus law is actually thirty-five percent potentially, if, if it's really skewed towards the very low or, or the low income housing. But you generally will see twenty to twenty-five percent.
I thought our ordinance specifically was written for twenty-five.
Well, so what, what, our, our ordinance actually, and this is one of the things to consider, is that the town does have an inclusionary housing ordinance that requires twenty-five percent of any project that's developed, ten or more units, to include twenty-five percent of the number of units, uh, for very low, low or moderate in the project itself onsite. That sort of, um, uh, I don't know, paves the way, but it sort of forces the project into a state density bonus eligible project. And, uh, the, the actual percentage is determined through a scale of how many units you provide for very low, low and moderate. And generally, the more very low income units, we have five, we require five percent, um, of units in a project to be very low, but the more of that, uh, the greater percentage of very low that you provide will trigger a greater, um, density bonus. So generally, I, I think it's about twenty-five, you're, yes, I mean, it's around twenty-five, but it's not an exact number, we don't specify the number. So you, you should look at that, I mean, in, on top of the fifteen, or on top of the twenty for the senior housing, that is also, I think, we should look at potentially being, we should expect that that is, is, I don't want to say likely, but is, is a definite possibility, that somebody, if they're applying for housing or developing housing, would also apply for the density bonus.
Okay, Darian?
Thank you. Um, I'm looking at two of the examples that you had put up here. I'm looking at the one in Mill Valley and the one at San Piper Circle. So the one at Mill Valley, which is mixed use.
Yes.
Is seventeen point six units per acre, total FAR of point five. San Piper Circle is ten units to the acre, but it's approximately, well, point three nine, so let's just round that to point four FAR. So, and backing up, the Mill Valley one, just the, the residential is, has an FAR of point four two. So the residential in Mill Valley and the residential of San Piper are very close. But San Piper has fewer units to the acre, so this simply means that the units are larger, correct?
That's correct.
So what we're doing when we're playing with a fifteen point one, and introduce, you know, units to the acre, and then talking about a point four FAR, is we are encouraging slightly more, slightly smaller units than, for instance, San Piper Circle.
Right, exactly. And, and I think that was born out of some of the discussions we had through the Tamil Vista corridor process, where we realized that fifteen point one or twenty units an acre can look very different depending on how big the units are.
Right.
Um, and generally, we don't, in our, in our, in our single-family residential districts, we do have an FAR that limits the overall size. In our multifamily residential districts, we haven't. And so we've seen some projects that come in, um, with the same number of units, but will, will be more, will be larger in scale and size than a, than a, a, a different project. So the FAR will, sort of basically says, you know, no matter what mix of uses you're gonna, you're gonna get, um, uh, whether it's something like this, you're gonna know the total amount of square footage. And there's some variation, commercials will generally have higher floor to floors, but we saw that, for example, when, um, uh, you know, Scandinavian Designs, they did a study session here, and they, they showed their, their project, and that was at about point three eight FAR, but, you know, occupied a large portion of the site. So, but, just to get back to your point, yes, that it controls, it, it essentially will incentivize smaller units.
On average.
On average.
Which doesn't necessarily mean smaller units entirely, it might just be more studios and one bedrooms than, say.
Right.
Two or three bedrooms.
So when we.
Now, is, do we have any policies in place to encourage those kinds of mix, that kind of mixture, to allow different kinds of housing for different types of households?
No, uh, generally, the market, though, will, I mean, what we've seen is that the variety of different housing types is what you kind of want as a developer, given that you're gonna, you know, market, capture the greater, greater percentage of the market if you do that. So when we did the Tamil, looked at point four FAR, what we found, um, at fifteen point one units an acre, was we found that you had approximately an average, if you maxed out, um, and, and built as much housing as you could, with, and, and you would get about a thou, a little over a thousand square feet on average per unit, which again, could be, you could have some smaller and some larger, but that was, that was the intent, was to, about an average of a thousand, a thousand square feet per.
And do you think that's a decent kind of sweet spot for our town to be in?
Um, I think we felt that it, it, it was a good place to be in. Um, you know, there's obviously, um, more work to do to find out what the perfect sweet spot might be, but balancing this overall scale and size of what was considered, um, uh, in terms of the, the massing, and, and also providing enough flexibility to allow for two-bedroom, one-bedroom studio units, um, not sort of, we were seeing some that were two thousand square feet in terms of the condominiums that were being proposed, two thousand, you know, four-bedroom, three-bath condos, that was, these, this sort of caters to a lower price point, I think, by design, potentially, uh, which was something we, we thought was important. And also, um, we've heard a lot about sort of right sizing in terms of, um, people are overhoused potentially, or wanting to downsize from large houses into smaller units, and this might be the, you know, around the right size where you get two bedrooms. So that was our.
Thank you.
Thinking on that, yeah.
About to just, okay.
No questions?
Any other questions, the staff? Okay. So, are there any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Kuhnhart?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, David Kuhnhart, Christmas Tree Hill. Normally, my, I would presume that when the planning commission and staff come forward, I would, um, always err on the side of saying yes. This time, I recommend that you change one number in the recommendation that's come forward, because you're at risk of doing a downzoning.
Say, say, say that again, David?
You're at risk of doing a downzoning.
Got it.
Taking a range of fifteen to twenty-five and saying it's now fifteen, it, it's already been acknowledged that the range of fifteen to twenty-five usually is interpreted meaning, oh, that's twenty-five, but now you're saying it's fifteen. That's a forty percent drop in unit per acre density. Uh, any downzoning is removal by the town of value, uh, is reducing rights, property rights. Um, we, I asked TAF, there aren't very many properties that are already residential, that are already built out, that would become, uh, over-dense to these standards immediately, and make them illegal, and, and maybe it's only a couple of properties that are in that condition. But nevertheless, you are removing development rights from anybody who has, let's say, a sixty-year-old, underdeveloped, single-story, commercial or warehouse type of property in that triangle between San Clemente and Paradise, uh, that could be, just like San Clemente Place, another excellent development. San Clemente Place, twenty-eight units to the acre, very attractive, most of it up on a podium of parking, so it's out of the flood zone. Um, I'd also remind you that when Assemblymember Levine came forward with his change, which was controversial, it was saying, well, we're a suburban area, not a metropolitan area, so twenty units to the acre would be the, the desired default. You're also introducing, if you go this way, uh, introducing the notion that there's a discrimination between senior housing and workforce housing by saying, well, if it's senior, of course, we all favor and, and support senior housing, and we need more of it, for sure. But to say that that can get twenty, and everything else is at fifteen, there's kind of a, an illogical, to my mind, discrimination against workforce housing, of which we need a lot, given the balance of jobs and housing here in our town. Uh, so, to avoid, uh, the, the downzoning pressure, which, by the way, discourages people who happen to own existing properties from doing renovation. It also discourages lenders and insurers from coverage of existing properties that may, that were expected to be larger or, uh, were already larger. I guess that means my time is up. So I would just simply recommend, don't collapse it to fifteen, collapse both to twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Um, excuse me, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to remind you that the time has reached nine thirty, so we would need to, um, entertain a motion to extend the meeting to ten P.M.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, wait, before you make the motion, can we just talk about it for a minute? What has to be accomplished to make sure that it's worth doing the extension, or that we only need, how many extensions we need, you know what I mean? Like, what, what is the plan for the rest of the night? Jim, do you mind if I just, I just wanted to get that clear before you make your motion?
Well, it's just that we've got, um, other things on the agenda, one to, uh, discuss the DPW constraints of where they're working in, and give staff direction on, uh, possibilities of.
I just, I mean, look, Carla, I'll defer to you, but it is not my intention to vote for a motion unless we can be clear one more time is gonna get it done. Like, if we can maybe be done by ten, then, you think?
I hope so. And we have closed session.
Yeah, and we have stuff to do afterwards. So I wonder if we ought to try to truncate our agenda or something, or be realistic about what can be done?
Um.
How time-sensitive is the, is the letter, Agenda Item six point one, point two?
That is really important, and I can tell you, I can do that in one minute.
Okay.
And if you've read, if you've read this staff report, you already know what it is.
Well, yeah.
But that's important, and it's important for whoever's left in the audience to know about, too. But, um.
So Carla, my position is, I'll vote, I will vote yes if you will commit to me where I'm done at ten.
Well, we have closed session.
Right? Well, we're done with the meeting except for closed session.
Oh, except for closed session, I.
Not, kind of sort of maybe one hundred percent.
How are you with, um, DPW?
If I have to continue, and I will, so I'll say that.
Okay, we'll talk really fast. Okay, I just wanted to make one.
Right.
Okay, do we have a motion that we're gonna extend till ten?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay.
And I think you have to have a open, public comment on this item as well.
Okay.
Councilmember Andrews?
We, we gotta do the public comment.
No, we're extending. She's doing this to extend till ten.
Right, did, you need public comment to extend till ten?
Public comment on the motion to extend till ten.
Right, that's what we're doing, we have, so we can extend your public comment.
No, just that I interrupted public comments.
Yes, I think, I think, and I will, I will take the blame for this, I whispered in the town manager's ear that we, if you are going to adjourn, you would need to extend long enough to finish public comment on the item that you're on, because you only got.
But we don't need public comment on the issue of extending the meeting.
That's correct.
Correct.
I'm gonna extend.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes. Any other public comment on this particular, yes? Ms. Metcalf?
Phyllis Metcalf, Twenty-three Park View, I just want to mention that the numbers that have been given to you by Adam were numbers that were developed during the Tamil Vista study from the public workshops, where members of the community came and talked about what kind of density they wanted, what kind of FAR they wanted, and that's how these figures came about. So this is something our community wants, and that's what Adam brought forward to the planning commission and is now being brought forward to you.
Thank you. Um, any other people here for public comment? I'm gonna close it then to public comment. I want to make, um, just one comment to address something that you said, Mr. Kuhnhart, that, um, I differ with you respectfully on the idea that it's discriminatory about the fifteen to twenty-one, because, um, if a developer comes in, um, he's automatically eligible for workforce housing density bonuses, just as you would for senior housing. So I think that, that that's already built in to that fifteen, that, that if it's workforce housing, um, that they are also eligible for the, uh, density bonuses. Okay, so, uh, any other comments from, uh, council or questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I'm wondering if our town attorney can address the issue that was brought up about whether or not this is a downzoning.
Hmm, that's a good question.
Thank you very much, I'm happy to do that. I will apologize for my voice. Um, I had a bit of the flu last week, so I still have this froggy voice. Um, this is not a downzoning situation. What you have in front of you is a general plan amendment. Um, there are no entitlements, um, associated with a general plan amendment, um, that you have in front of you. Um, you do, there is a zoning ordinance, what is in front of you is not a amendment to the zoning ordinance. Um, and what is being proposed, um, by the planning commission and recommended by staff is to reduce the range that your current, um, that is in your current, um, general plan, um, to essentially the bottom of the range. Um, and so there would not be a, um, uh, the issue that was addressed is, is not applicable in this situation, um, and I, there's no entitlement here at all. Um, it is a discretionary, um, review that would be, that you would go through, through your zoning amendment, um, through your zoning ordinance, excuse me, um, and, um, and so I, I do take, um, I disagree respectfully with the speaker that this would be, um, a downzoning situation.
Okay, thank you. Um, so if there are any other comments, yes, Jim?
So, once this is done, our general plan and our actual zoning ordinances will be consistent?
Let me just, so it would for the Tamil Vista corridor, again, we haven't adopted yet zoning for the other areas which are designated mixed-use commercial.
Okay.
So, so the answer to that would be not yet. But if we were to adopt zoning, we would know how to make it consistent with the general plan.
Very good.
Okay, just as.
No, go ahead.
Okay, just as a matter of, um, a public record, that what we're discussing now does not include the Best Western.
It, it, it does in the sense that it is also within the mixed-use commercial, the light blue color, um, uh, but as we've talked about, the policy for that corridor, from my view, and I think from everybody who's followed that process, um, the policy for that corridor was set in October of two thousand and sixteen, so really, what it is doing is aligning the general plan with the policy that was adopted and went through the public process and all the community meetings before.
Okay.
So it's, I, yeah, it's, it's not a different policy for that site that, uh, other than that what we adopted in two thousand and sixteen.
Okay. Okay, folks, so we have the opportunity to, um, make a motion to adopt these amendments?
Set Resolution, uh, six eighteen?
Uh, it is Resolution six, two thousand and eighteen.
I shall move.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay, thank you, on to, um, Item six one, dot one, this is the, uh, Public Works Engineering Engineering. On to Item 6.1, dot 1, this is the Public Works Engineering Office space.
Can we postpone that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Well, Peter walks up and gets the, his slide prepared. I'm just going to start this off. We're under dire need of office space. You know, before the consolidation talks with the fire department, our fire station here at Station 14 was really overstuffed and overcrowded as it was. And as you know, we moved our Public Works Engineering team on one of the wings that took up three and a half offices. That caused a lot of issues with, with the fire staff. And what we did as we started sharing services with Larkspur Fire, we moved personnel around at the other three stations between the two cities and towns. As we move forward, this station, Station 14 with the consolidation, is the main station. It houses our fire chief, our fire marshal, and our battalion chiefs. It's the main headquarters for that now consolidated fires agency. And with that, it's become necessary to find housing, office space for our Public Works Engineering team. And coming to you in a future council meeting, we'll be asking to expand that team with staffing to really accomplish the needs that we discussed earlier in this meeting. What we're looking at here, and again, this is a brief presentation, we'll come back to you if this is something that you are interested in considering at a future meeting, it's really housing our staff onsite on this site here, and there's a lot of reasons for that, and Peter will touch on it. And with that, I want to turn it over here.
Thank you, Todd. Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is just a couple of views. We're going to go through four of these slides, and I hope this item takes five minutes. So there's two other options that we've looked at. Using existing town resources would be pretty difficult to accommodate folks. Todd and I also met with a real estate agent and walked around and looked at some potential lease spaces in terms of providing office space for public work staff. And then this third option that's before you here tonight is really looking at the assets that we have as a town in terms of existing land. And so one option would be to develop some type of permanent structure. So this would be something that would be, I would say it's in-between original construction as well as a modular building. So this is kind of a hybrid. This is drawn up by a company called Project Frog just for us to look at this. And then just go through these for us, Rebecca. The next slide kind of zooms in and shows what the first option would look like in terms of, I believe, 1,700, about 1,800 square feet of office space. The pink line there indicates kind of the walkway that would exist between the planning department, the planning counter, and public works. If this was a public works and engineering building, we would have office for staff that's coming on board. Our IT person currently doesn't have an office, and the two of us that are over there in the fire department would then relinquish our space to the fire department so that they could have that whole building across the parking lot. We would make up for lost parking spaces by taking down the sheds that are a little bit out of the view here. But this is just something we wanted your direction on. If this looks like something the council is interested, I think staff certainly is. We do not have the space we need. The other thing I'd like to point out is a conference room, 230 square foot drawn up here, is something that all of the town can benefit from. Having a table that seats, you know, 12 to 15 people that could sit around comfortably with a TV screen, you know, we don't have that here. A lot of times, we meet here in the chambers. We rearrange tables and chairs, and so that has been something that we're dealing with. So we're just looking for your direction. This to us, from a staff standpoint, is something that we would invest in in terms of a town resource. This particular program builds out at around $350 a square foot. So if you do the math, let's say you round 1,800 square feet, and somebody's going to check my math, you multiply it times 350, that gets you around $630,000. If I round that up for 10% contingency, this is a $700,000 construction project. And again, this would be something that we could look at different finance options if we wanted to do this. But we're just looking for your direction to maybe write up a staff report, fully investigate this, and come back to you for future direction.
And one other thing of options, if we're not, this is really going to be a permanent type of thing, a long term. So this isn't something where we buy two double-wide trailers and park it in the parking lot. I think the neighborhood would be upset and talking to them. And really, this is something that, as Peter touched, something that improves our service delivery, and it's something, you know, the community can be proud to work in. The conference room supports our staff in planning and building. They're overcrowded. We're starting to look at the downstairs of the house over the next 12 months plus possibly storage and opening office space downstairs as well for our planning and building departments. And it really allows all-in-one, kind of one-stop shopping for a community member that comes here for a business permit, that wants to talk to planning, that needs to go to public works. They don't have to go off-site. If you also remember across the street at the Rose Garden, we paid $80,000 a year for a lease to have Public Works Engineering there. And, you know, after seven, eight years, we didn't own that, and it was lost money, really. And so this is something we want to invest in. We think, we believe that this is the right footprint as we start to expand and look at fire, solve the problem with public works building and planning, and then start to incorporate the house as we move forward over the coming years.
Jim?
What about the, do we own a building on the other side of your driveway next to your office? Can we renovate that?
Yeah, so we looked at the town-owned house. Again, we're looking at a one- to two-year lease for an employee upstairs.
Mm-hmm.
And doing a cursory search, and it's something that I want to, a cursory check and evaluation of the upstairs. And again, I'm going to have Peter and his team continue to work on that longer term to evaluate that for office space as we move forward, so that, we will continue to do that. But looking at the current state, I'm not recommending it at this time, but it's something we can give you an analysis and a staff report. Downstairs, though, we are looking at incorporating the downstairs. It's about 600, 700 square feet with storage.
Okay.
And that would really open up office space, again, downstairs. So yes, we are starting to, this is the first step. Second step will be the house and options there. And we continue to talk to the residents in the neighborhood as well of what we're thinking about, so they're involved in this process with us as well.
Diane. So when you say opening, or putting storage in the downstairs of the house opens up the downstairs, you're talking about the downstairs in Town Hall?
Yes, planning and building.
Have you considered a different floor plan that might have fewer offices and more flexible workspace so that in the future we could maybe accommodate more employees if necessary or different types of uses? Because I feel like a lot of offices are moving away from individual offices with doors.
Everything's on the table at this point, Vice Mayor First, so we're open to any particular arrangement. I know that right now, in the type of work that we're doing from an engineering standpoint and dealing with the public and oftentimes having personnel conversations, I mean, we're not, we're not a startup, and, you know, we don't have free food, and we don't all sit around the same table. Sometimes we need some private space. So, yeah, there's certainly a balance we could strike there. This was just a, we need to look at the footprint and construction costs, and Rebecca's put up a few pictures of us. This is kind of some of the work that this company has done, just an example. In terms of something that we could build in the very short term, in a matter of, you know, say, six months, it's pretty high-quality construction. The photo in the middle there, they're, one of their more famous pieces is the Bridge Pavilion at the Golden Gate Plaza there, which is one of their projects which anyone can go check out when you're next at the bridge. But I know we're running out of time, so I'm happy to take any other questions or...
And I think the other one to the Bridge Pavilion, that's a, that photo, something that really interested us as staff was to mirror our facade. So to mirror Town Hall, or if we wanted to mirror the firehouse, we could do that. And so that was, we thought that was a really good amenity for the community.
Right.
Maybe you answered my question. I'm a little apprehensive about the aesthetic of the thing. I'm fully supportive of doing whatever you have to do to have sufficient space, and the location seems like a good idea. But number one, is the reason you're doing modular is because it can just be done quickly or it's a good price point or something? And then secondly, aesthetically, will you run it by the Planning Commission or something?
Yeah. Those are great points. So the number one reason is cost. So if we were to do original construction, we're looking at three or four times as much cost. And so we want to be prudent with our use of citizen money. And then, yeah, timing is an issue. We can do this a lot quicker than we could otherwise. And then to your last point, I would certainly recommend that we get input from the Planning Commission on design and color and facade and all those things. Those are all to be improved, for sure.
To the point, and we may have said modular, I don't know that we can define this as modular by definition. It's really...
It's a hybrid between original construction...
It's like a prefab.
It's a prefab.
Yeah. A lot of the new buildings, the College of Marin, are prefab, and you wouldn't even think they were.
That's actually demonstrated best in the photo that's in the upper-right part of your screen, where these, these pieces of the building, that's actually the upper-left one, Rebecca, but that's fine, are built off-site, there you go, and they're brought in and assembled in the type of design that we want. So that's where you get some of your cost savings, is these pieces are built in off-site and they're assembled onsite.
Okay, so how's everybody with that? Can...
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. You have 30 seconds, public comment. No public comment? Okay, we'll close this public comment. So will you then like to proceed and come back with more pictures, ideas, whatever? But does everybody agree to support?
Just make one comment?
Sure.
Just, I would like to see a really thorough vetting of the construction costs, because what we've seen in every project we've done in the past two years is that the bids came in way over the estimates. And I know that housing construction costs are starting to go through the roofs because of the impact of the North Bay fires. Just finding workmen and contractors is almost impossible, and it's driving costs up. So I would like to see a really thorough vetting of what we're actually getting into with the commitment on construction costs on this.
Okay, Diane.
And please also include furnishings. Metropolitan Transportation Commission, when they renovated their new building in San Francisco throughout these budgets, and then they came back later and said, oh, and by the way, we need tens of millions of dollars for new cubicles and desks and everything else. So we want full costs, please. Evaluate flexibility so that it, however it is constructed, can be flexible enough for the long term, not just for immediate needs. But I say go for it. I think it's, I think it's a compel, you know, really compelling concept.
Okay, so then you have direction? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move right along. This was, I brought this up, and this was to allow me to submit on behalf of our council a letter of opposition on Senate Bill 827, which you have in your packets. It's something that, if you ask people, are they familiar with it? Nobody's heard of it. And it's getting traction in Sacramento. Essentially what it is, is if you have a transit corridor, which we do, 101, and if you have actual buses that travel along it, along that route, there is the potential that everything within close proximity has the ability to build up to 85 feet high, high density, no parking, no design review, no nothing. It's just, it doesn't matter what you're zoned for, it doesn't matter what's in your general plan. And to, when I heard this complete bill, I was just horrified. And so anyway, there's a letter in, in your packet, and I really highly encourage you to let me send that in as opposition. This is being, the opposition is being supported by the League of California Cities, and it applies to everyone throughout the state.
Fully agree. Public comment, right?
Public comment. Okay. If you're not familiar with it, check it out. It makes wind cup look like a cottage.
Yep.
And just picture 85 feet high, maximum density, no parking...
Five minutes.
No design review.
We have five minutes. I'd move, go ahead and do the letter, subject to amendments. Here's my suggestions, but take them or leave them.
Oh.
Jim, what's the concept of your amendment?
One would be where we talk about where 28% water. I would also put in X percent FEMA floodplains. So it's obvious that a good portion of our 4.1 square miles should be...
Okay. And I'm glad that you put this in because, Todd, I really wanted you to talk about SB-35, and we do have five minutes left. Diane?
And I'd like to add something perhaps towards the end of Paragraph 3, right where you're talking about, about reducing the carbon footprint as well. Let's add something about, it would add further pressure on our underfunded flood control infrastructure and potentially result in development within our floodplain that, something, something, blah, blah, blah. Figure it out.
That's a good idea.
Okay, so...
And you might even say that, you know, what is it, approximately a third of our homes are in a FEMA flood...
I have.
Well, that's in there.
Yeah, that's in there. Okay, great. And Todd, just briefly, because Jim added this, about us being one of 13 cities in the state.
Yes, I was at the League of California Cities last week when the State Housing Department released the list, and over 98% of the cities and counties in the state are now subject to SB-35 in the streamlining process. 13 cities and towns were recognized for actually meeting the requirements and are not under the current streamlining requirements, and the town of Corder Medera is one of them.
Outstanding.
So it was awesome, and I think it goes to the work that this town council has worked on over the past few years, as well as our planning department and Adam's team. So just, it was great to see that list. It was great to be at the league when that came down. And how I understand it, there's four evaluations as we go with the SB-35 evaluation, and this is the first of four. And we're positioned well, again, to meet the second evaluation. We will meet the requirements moving forward. So anyway, I just wanted to recognize the town for that, and good job.
Great, that was really great. So do I have a motion to...
Is there a public comment?
I did, I asked.
Okay, I'll move to approve the letter...
Second.
With some edits...
Right.
That Carla can work out with Todd.
Right. Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay, we're, let's see, okay, we're going to move on to the draft for the upcoming agenda. It's just a draft. If you think of something else that might want to be in here, how about letting Todd know?
Okay.
Okay, and then I would like a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, folks, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.